Okay, welcome, everybody. We'll call the January 26, 2021, Chucky Town Council meeting to order. Judy, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Zabriski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Romack?
Here.
Mayor Klevstad?
Here.
And we are going to note that Councilmember Polavy will likely join us a little late this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we have a special treat for the Pledge of Allegiance today. It will be read by Belvedere Roberts' fourth-grade students. The Glenther Elementary students are currently reading and enjoying fourth-grade core reading book, Island of the Blue Dolphins. They're also studying animal adaptations and writing a five-paragraph expository essay. They also recently went on a virtual field trip to learn about Morro Bay otters, one of my favorites, and are learning one-digit by three-to-four-digit multiplication. So, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Three, two, one, begin.
Hello, Town Council. This is Mrs. Beverly Roberts, fourth grade, 2021, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the United States, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, Town Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. What a pleasure. We miss having a large group in our chambers to join us in honor of the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, and tonight, since we're still virtual, we are going to follow an order just to keep things flowing. But, of course, if anybody has any last-minute questions or comments, you can speak up at any time. But in general, for questions and comments from the council, we'll do Polavy, Zabriski, Vice Mayor Henderson, and then Councilmember Robach and myself. So, with that, Judy, do we have any general public comment for item 4.0?
No, ma'am.
Great. Then we are ready for our first presentation. We have a couple of really exciting presentations today.
Mayor Klevstad.
Yes.
Mayor Klevstad.
Yes. So, Polavy has joined us, apparently.
I've joined, and I have a comment. We had a piece of public comment submitted via email prior to the meeting regarding the audit of the Auburn Crossing use agreement. And I just wanted to ask staff and ask the rest of council. Personally, I am very interested in a hearing on that sooner rather than later, a presentation perhaps as soon as our first meeting in February, if possible. I know there's been some work going on there, so that is something I'd like to address. And before we enter into new alternative equivalence and other negotiations with developers, I think it's important that we reflect on some of the things we've been doing in the past.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Polavy duly noted.
I'll just add in there that we have been looking at that internally and looking at bringing something back, possibly the first meeting, but more likely the second meeting in February, given the agenda that's already planned for the first meeting and capacity. But sometime in February is our target.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Polavy, for bringing it up.
Okay, are there any other items that any of the council members would like to comment on? And I just want to let you guys know, I can't see them on the iPad only over here, but I'll manage until we can make an accommodation. So, presentations, our first one is from Emmanuel Jones and Associates, presentations regarding our legislative advocacy program. We have David Jones and Kira Emmanuel-Ross joining us, right?
Yeah.
I believe IT will allow them to make their presentation on Zoom.
There we go. Good afternoon. Can you all hear me and see me? Awesome. My name is David Jones, and I'm the president of Emmanuel's Jones. We were hired by, a little brief background for some of you who are new to us. We were hired by Steve Wright, who was the first town manager of the town of Chucky. The firm has been around since 1987. We have currently 13 clients from Chucky all the way down to Coronado. We specialize in city representation and town representation, so virtually all of our clients are cities and towns. I worked for the League of Cities for 16 years. I was a federal lobbyist for the league and then was moved back to Sacramento and did public safety, public works, transportation, and eventually budget, rev, and tax. So I've got a good background in finance and all things budget-related. Kira, I'll let you just give your background for the council members that don't know us.
Good evening. I'm Kira Ross. So my background is I spent about 10 years in the legislature largely on environmental issues. I ended my term in the legislature as the chief consultant to the Assembly Natural Resources Committee, where I focused in on a lot of SEQA in energy and solid waste issues. Went over to the League of Cities and spent my time there as the environmental lobbyist, and now I'm with Emmanuel's Jones.
Very good. Okay, we're going to give you a quick rundown of kind of where we are and what's going on in Sacramento. The biggest thing, I think, is the budget gets introduced and has to be done statually by January 10. This governor did his on January 8. The good news from Sacramento, if there is such a thing, is that we have a surplus, a very surprising surplus in the state budget. Revenues, when they did the budget last June, they estimated what the revenues would come into the state and were up about $29 billion over what they guessed in June we'd have. Expenses have gone up, obviously, quite a bit with COVID and unemployment and other related things. So the actual quote-unquote surplus for the state is about $15.5 billion. So Kira's going to go into a little bit more detail on the budget, but revenues are up as a percentage, is up 22.7%, which I think is phenomenal. We're right now at the beginning of a two-year session, so legislation is starting to be introduced. Normally, legislation has to sit in its place for 30 days. So it can't be heard for 30 days. And just interestingly, the reason people said, "What's 30 days for?" Well, 30 days was the amount of time it took somebody from, by horseback, to get from Southern California to Sacramento to see the legislation. So they had to give them a window to get up there to see it. So we're going to see an awful lot of new legislation introduced. It's starting to come in. We've got about 560 bills introduced so far this year. And there's, the deadline for new bills to be introduced is February 19. So like all good procrastinators, we'll see just the ton of bills will show up on the 17th, and we'll be shipping those that are of import to you, to your staff, to look at. Importantly, the kind of the general themes, a lot of things due to COVID didn't happen last year. So normally, the legislature puts in about 2,500 bills a year. They send about 1,200 to the governor, and he, you know, signs about 80, 85% of them. This last year, they only sent 670 bills to the governor, so way down from the normal 1,000. So a lot of bills that were moving through the process were the victim, the ancillary victim of the COVID disease because they ran out of bandwidth and time to deal with it. And then the physical constraints of the Capitol, in order to socially distance and have committee hearings, they were very, very limited in their ability and bandwidth to deal with those things. So consequently, this year, we see a lot of bills that were do-overs from last session. So a lot of things that we were interested in last year, we're going to be interested again. Housing and homelessness, both, you know, getting affordable housing dollars out and getting homeless issues dealt with. Police use of force was a big effort last year, and they barely, I think they passed two out of 10 bills on police use of force that were fairly minor. Clearly, we're going to be dealing with COVID and wildfire issues. And I know it's of interest to the council on climate change and resiliency. And so one of the bills that didn't make it last year is back again, and it's a wildfire drought resilience climate change bond. It's SB 45, and it's $4.7 billion in various programs dealing with climate change, forest management, home hardening, et cetera. So I know that will be of interest to the council. And I don't want you to get too excited because when bond legislation starts at the beginning of a two-year session, they normally wait when we get closer to the ballot. So this is a ballot proposal for November of 2020. So this is going to sit and gather some momentum, and we'll have to see what else is in the bond category for the November ballot. They, right now, they, one of the, some of the things that they're trying to do kind of on a faster track. Normally, our cycle is the governor puts his budget in in January, the legislature looks at it and reviews it, and then they don't really get serious about the budget until after the May revise. So after we all pay our taxes in April, takes about a month to count them, count it, and then they really get serious about really serious budget decisions after about May 15. The budget has to be done by June 15. But this year, the governor's saying, "I've got a $15 billion surplus. I want to spend about a third of it very quickly to respond to COVID, wildfire, emergency preparedness, and homeless and housing issues." So the legislature right now, today, in fact, passed, or sent out of the Senate Budget Committee, a bill extending the eviction moratorium, which is set to expire at the end of this month, on January 31. And they sent a package including rental relief for tenants and landlord relief for landlords that aren't being paid. So that package is going to the governor, and it's anticipated that that will be signed before the end of this month. So the eviction moratorium that was to expire on the 31st of January will now expire on the 1st of July. So that's, that's good news for our folks. With that, I think I will turn it over to Kira. One other thing I'll just mention that's kind of interesting is the legislative leadership has said, "We are recommending to all of our members that they can only pass 12 bills per member this session, can only move 12 bills out of the House." So members are going to have to really pick and choose what their priorities are going to be. So we'll, we'll have to be watching that. So with that, I will turn it over to Kira to talk a little bit more about the budget, et cetera.
Thank you, David. So when the governor spoke about the budget a few weeks ago, he talked about the urgent needs of Californians, including safely reopening schools, support for small businesses, money in the pockets of Californians in need, and getting Californians vaccinated and wildfire preparedness. In that same conversation, as David just mentioned, he also talked about expediting a few items. One of those, as David mentioned, is the rental assistance and eviction package and protection. And that's currently being housed in Assembly Bill 80 and Senate Bill 91, and they're twin bills. As David mentioned, that does move the date from January 31 to July 30. It also includes about $150 million for small counties, which are counties with populations under 200,000 people. That money will flow to the, through the county. It will then flow down to landlords. And so renters will need, landlords are going to get the funds. They'll pay for, they can get up to 80% of their past due rent through this, through these funds. And it also allows them to pay for some of the utility bills that they would pay on behalf of their tenants. And that's largely a water bill because most of the time, electric bills are paid by the tenant directly to the utility. These are funds that are going to be helpful. And renters who do not have landlords that opt into this system can also get funding directly through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. It's a little bit more of a complicated system, but hopefully, we're getting to a lot of the renters. The legislation also puts a priority on the use of funds for rental arrears to stabilize households and prevent evictions, but it also permits it to be used for prospective rental payments and, as I said, utility bills. The governor also included in this expedited package that he would like moving forward in the next week or two, $2.4 billion for something called the Golden State Stimulus. And this is a $600 one-time payment to low-income workers who are eligible to receive the earned income tax credit in 2019. And there's also $575 million for grants to small businesses. And this is an addition, additional plop of money to an existing program today that is out there, which was funded with $500 million by last year. And so that's something we'll get to your staff as a direct, it's a link on the state's COVID website that they can, businesses up to $25,000, and this is grants that they can apply for. So it's something if they, if it's a small business, is a good opportunity for them to get some additional funds. In addition to, to his $3 billion package that he wants moved immediately, he also has a $4 billion plan to help California businesses and jobs recover from the pandemic and includes funding for a jobs initiative, accelerating investment and job creation, funding for workforce development, and includes $1.5 billion for the infrastructure related to EV vehicles and his goal of 2035 goal of getting to no gas vehicles and only new EV vehicles. There's also about $4.48 billion in direct COVID relief, and this includes funding for vaccinations and contract tracing and also additional funding for state response. There's also extended funding for environmental issues. As I mentioned, there's $1.0 billion for electric vehicles and charging-related infrastructure. There's also $1 billion in there for a coordinated forest health and fire prevention strategy. And he's asking for $323 billion, $323 million of the billion dollars for wildfires to be expedited and to be spent in the early spring. And that's to start the anticipated forest health and fire prevention projects before the next wildfire season. And this is a lot of vegetation management, but also making sure that California and our communities that are potentially threatened by wildfire are ready for the next wildfire season. So that action is actually already happening in Sacramento. They're doing the pre-work on the $373 million, and we're actively engaged in that discussion. And then additionally, he also had about $1.37 billion in cap and trade expenditure plan for existing programs. And this is additional funding for the low-carb transportation and ZEB technology, health and resilient forests, and not a lot of the existing climate programs that are out there will get an additional boost of funding. In housing areas, we talked about the rental assistance and landlord assistance. He's also got money in there for, for low-income housing tax credits. So this is additional boost for developers that are looking to do housing as well as funding for Project Home Key. And finally, there's some funding in there for libraries for scenic broadband deployment. So it's helped with like large-scale broadband deployment for libraries in California. The one thing on all of this budget money to remember is that this is all, with the exception of the rental eviction and landlord money that we know is going tomorrow, probably, the rest of it, this is the governor's proposal. The legislature will start their subcommittee hearings. We'll have a much better sense of exactly what the financial state of the state is once we get to what's called the May revision, when all the tax money comes in after Tax Day in April. And the final deadline for the budget is June 15. So they've got to finish it by then and get it to the governor in order for it to be signed and enacted before the new fiscal year on July 1. So as we go forward, we'll look for additional opportunities. But it is a, you know, it's a good year in terms of what we're seeing early on, on the budget actions. And hopefully, we'll continue to see good things to come.
The only thing I'll additionally mention is we're seeing, as I mentioned, February 19, is we'll see all the introduced bills. We did pick up the rumor mill that there will be legislation dealing with requiring local agencies, when you review your next general plan in the safety element, you would have to have, you'd have to address evacuation during emergencies. So I know that was something that your public safety people had mentioned to us as a big need for Chucky, that we don't have dollars for planning for evacuations. We have particularly problematic topography and areas of Chucky that have a problem with getting in and out in a quick manner. So that's something we'll, of course, be watching very closely. The bill has not been introduced yet, but we know it's coming. So that will be of interest to your public safety staff. With that, I know that's a lot, and I know you've got a big agenda, but we'd be happy to answer questions or go into more depth on anything you'd like.
Wow, that was really interesting. We've got a lot to look forward to, it sounds like. And my only question is, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some sort of publication about these, these numbers because there was no way I could write fast enough to follow everything that you guys were, were talking about. So if you could just forward that on to the council, I'd so appreciate that because there are some things I'd like to go back on and, and check, in particular, the, the forest health management and forest fire mitigation legislation. Now, you said something was going to be on the November ballot. Are you talking about November 2021 or 2022?
22.
22.
Yeah, it has to be a general election. So, and we know, what, two years ago, the school bond failed, and so they're very excited about bringing back a school bond. And so there's a lot of competition for what goes on the ballot. And of course, there is a general fund cost for debt service. So they're very careful about what goes on and whose turn is it. So the climate resilience bond is going to be competing possibly with a school construction bond, and they've got to sort out what goes on the ballot. What is also going to be on the ballot is the referendum to repeal the legislation that passed that banned that passed that banned flavored tobacco products. So the industry got enough signatures to say, we want to have the voters decide in November of 2022 whether the state of California can ban flavored tobacco products. So that will be all guaranteed to be, that will be on the ballot.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Paulavie, do you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Closestad. I have one comment for the rest of council's benefit, and then I have a question for, for Emmanuel Jones and crew. Thanks for coming back again. It's a pleasure to see you guys. One thing for the rest of council's benefit, because I don't believe it's been distributed, but last year, we did adopt a legislative advocacy platform that I'm sure staff can get to you prior to our retreat next week. That was an effort that we all put together last year in order to give these guys more clarity on exactly sort of what our goals are. So I hope that's been useful to you guys in general. And then it's something that, you know, we can certainly adapt and add to or subtract from as, as necessary as a council. My one, it's sort of a question, sort of a comment to you guys at Emmanuel Jones is, I know that Mountain Housing Council is our local regional housing consortium, for lack of a better word. And they are putting together sort of a housing, a rural housing legislative platform specifically that is being run through the Sierra Business Council's legislative advocacy arm. And I'm just wondering if you guys are in communication with them to know, you know, basically, you know, anything that comes out of Mountain Housing Council, I will say for the most part, I'm not going to say it's a given, because I don't know exactly everything that's coming out of there, does have a priority for us in Sacramento as well. So my main question is, are you, are you guys aware of that, A? And B, you know, if not, can we make sure, I'm sure staff can help us make those connections for you, so that you guys are, you know, more of a, a double power than a, than a single going into the room sometimes?
No, that would be great. We've had efforts before in trying to coordinate with your Sierra folks and, you know, have not been successful of actually linking up. But I know past council members tried to link us up, and we tried to link up, but it didn't, didn't work. So I would look, very much look forward to. And I think we've worked with, you know, Burbank Housing is a not-for-profit with Santa Rosa area, and we work a lot in coordination with cities and not-for-profits. So welcome that. We've got, we've got good experience. Tax credits are bread and butter. We were successful in getting a $16 million tax credit for Glendale's not-for-profit. So we'd be delighted to work with them and do anything we can to make housing more affordable and successful in the town.
Great. Yeah, thank you so much. And I'll pass that off to Councilmember Rilmac and maybe Andy. Who do you guys work most directly with internally? Andy or Andy Morris, or is that with?
I think, I think, I think torch is being passed, but we'll.
You guys can all work it out, and I trust that that'll happen. It has been me, but we may be shuffling that a little bit. It might end up being some combination of Jen and Hillary. We'll see.
Yes.
Whatever it ends up being, you guys got it dialed, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you for your work on our behalf. Really appreciate it.
Most welcome.
Councilmember Paulavie, if I can just add, and for the sake of the rest of the council, we do, we can share the legislative platform that the council adopted previously. We did have a conversation today about revisiting that following our priority setting session next week, and either reaffirming that platform, adding to it, or, you know, changing that in some way, depending on what the priorities of the council are going to be. That could be in alignment with the budget adoption process later this year, so that will be coming back. And then the plan going forward is that Hillary Hobbs and I will start interacting with the legislative advocates, so that we can be informed moving, moving forward and update the council accordingly.
Thank you. Councilmember Zabriski, did you have something?
Just wanted to ask if Emmanuel Jones already has some experience with the solar mandate, because that might be of interest to the town because of our location and our, the percentage of electric, electricity that we get from renewables already.
We're very familiar with the legislation, have worked on it. We've worked on actually some issues for your town in the last year or two, where we worked on, there was a issue with solar panels and some snow, some questions about snow falling off solar panels and that they're not, a lot of the policies in Sacramento are not written with a thought of snow in them as it, as it comes to solar panels. I don't always remember that, yeah, you get heavy snow in certain parts of California, but generally very familiar with it, various solar programs and solar laws.
Vice Mayor Henderson, do you have anything?
I don't have anything additionally. Thank you so much for your presentation.
And Councilmember Rilmac.
Just thank you, Councilmember Paulavie. That's, I was exactly going to bring up Mountain Housing Council, so I look forward, yeah, to working with staff if they need help on that, or, you know, connecting the right people, because I think it'd be really great to have a joint effort in Sacramento. So thank you both for your presentation, and lots of exciting things could be coming our way, maybe. So thank you.
Yeah, I can't thank the both of you enough. This is something that obviously we cannot do ourselves effectively, and you guys do. And we are so appreciative of your assistance in making sure that we are aware of things that could benefit our community, and also conversely, things that we would want to make sure that we're expressing our concern over. I know we've had a few of those as well. So with that, is there, are there any questions from staff?
No questions, thank you.
And Judy, do we have any public comment on this item? No public comment. Okay, I believe we're done. Thank you again.
Thank you all. Look forward to seeing you in person sometime soon, I hope.
Please, yes. Okay, the next item is council goal updates. And Jed, you're going to kick this one off?
I am, thank you so much. Hillary Hobbs is going to run the presentation for us. This is going to be a tag team effort here. Felt it was important to give staff an opportunity, really highlight the work that they've done this past year, and also visit some of the unexpected accomplishments that we had in light of living through a pandemic. So we'll briefly touch on those and then hand off the baton to various members of the team to discuss the, the goals and priorities that were established by the council. And this is really feeding into next week's conversation with council, where we will discuss council priorities for the upcoming year and goals that the staff can work on. So Hillary, if you could please turn to the next slide. Before we review accomplishments, we did want to give a little bit of context and remind the council and the community that council priorities are generally about 20% of staff's day-to-day or regular work assignments. 80% of staff time is spent on frontline services and core, core town services that are provided from human resources, accounts payable, day-to-day policing, snow plowing, which we should all experience the benefit of tomorrow and in the coming days, our road maintenance, permit processing, development review, fleet maintenance, parking management, code compliance, and, and there's much more. So this is just a, a short list, but to, to give context to this conversation and what we're going to be discussing next week as a, as a team, this is 20% of staff's time. So Hillary, next slide, please. 2019, 2020 was definitely a year of unexpected accomplishments, one of those being COVID-19 response. There's a plethora of items that the town accomplished and activities that the town endured or undertook, I'm sorry, because of COVID-19 that we certainly weren't planning for. Managing Emergency Operations Center, housing and economic recovery branches. And we have a new Truckee Connected Program that we are running through our police department, and they are doing outreach to those at most need of services to make sure they have the proper resources available to them. So we are thankful for our volunteers that are, are offering their time to do that. We've altered our working environment internally in the town. We're working from home with cohort schedules to avoid risking exposure to the entire town team and not being able to continue services to the community. Winter Wonderland and our grant programs that we've adopted, and our business COVID compliance programs, where our staff has been out really helping our community and our business community be compliant with the COVID regulations that have come down from the state and the county. Thank you, Hillary. Also, new town manager and police chief transitions. We've ran, the clerk's office ran an election with 10 council candidates, so that's quite an accomplishment to, 10 council candidates is quite a few to have in a race. A successful ballot measure with Measure K to support council goals and objectives, including housing, fire mitigation, and other needs that come up in the future. And adopted a short-term rental ordinance with registration already rolling out and staff working on that as we speak right now. So with that, next slide, Hillary. We have 2019 goals that were carried forward. The council, during their previous goal-setting session, reaffirmed these goals that were from the prior year. And then in addition to these goals, established three new focus areas for 2020. The general plan, housing, and create raving fans. So Danielle's going to discuss what we've accomplished as a town for the general plan, and then we're going to transition to Shawna for housing update. And Bron and Erica will discuss create raving fans. And then Hillary's going to summarize with our 2019 reflection. And then we'll close it out at the end. So just to give you a brief insight as to what's coming. And with that, I'll ask Danielle to take over the discussion.
Great, thanks. So we thought it'd be helpful to kind of remind the council what the goal was, specific to the general plan update process. And really, our focus last year, when we were talking about the general plan, was additional public engagement. We didn't anticipate COVID when we created this goal. So we shifted a little bit from directions that we thought we would go and how to get public participation to really honing in on the timeline and working with G-PAC specifically to try and work through what's been a more complicated process than we anticipated, because I think of our remote nature, which has really been the land use alternatives portion. Next slide, Hillary. So I put this together because I thought it would be helpful, since we have some new council members, to kind of understand the context of the general plan update. So as a reminder, even though we talk in terms of creating a 2040 general plan, we did include altogether, under the umbrella of that, updating the downtown-specific plan, because it's from 1997. And then also taking on a climate action plan, which through this process, we ultimately decided to incorporate as an element in the general plan, which we don't currently have. So if you look, we started the process of doing the update in February of 2018. We worked through a long existing conditions report, which is 360 pages, I think, if I'm remembering, of background information and context that we can use, not only for our discussions, but also in the preparation of the environmental portion of the general plan update. We did a visioning kind of opportunities process with the community, where we were able to have in-person workshops. We did Truckee Thursday. We, you know, did as much outreach as we kind of thought we could as part of that portion. And then because of COVID, we kind of adapted, and we did some virtual workshops that were supposed to be in person. And then the staff spent quite a bit of time working on what we call administrative drafts or working drafts of the elements contained within the general plan itself. So part of that was going through and doing an audit to remove things that had either been accomplished or we knew weren't relevant anymore, identifying areas of state law inconsistency where things had changed, marking up where we knew we had new ideas in the community that we wanted to make sure didn't fall off our radar. And so those we have kind of sitting right now, waiting for what will be after the land use alternatives process. So that's sort of what we're in right now, is land use alternatives process. We're still talking about goals and policies as part of that, so they're feeding back into these sort of administrative draft elements that we have. And we did just get the, as I mentioned, administrative draft downtown-specific plan. So that's been helpful for sort of internal discussions and how we're going to roll that out through our public engagement process. And then sort of a continued discussion that we're having internally about how the, our climate action planning efforts are getting integrated, both through G-PAC, how they're presented in the general plan itself, and then how we're engaging the community also with that. Once we kind of move forward through these parts of the process, that's when you really kind of finish it out with your environmental impact report. And we all know that that's a pretty lengthy process, but I think because we've done a lot of the background work already, the new target, and this is updated based on Asense, so our consultant that we're using for the general plan, they just provided me a new timeline yesterday. So they're estimating now a completion of June of 2022, assuming we stay on the track that we're on now. Next slide, Hillary. So just more big picture, you know, what did we actually accomplish in this last year? We did, like I said, virtual land use alternatives workshop that we had open for about six weeks with substantial participation. We learned a lot from that, I will say, and it's helping factor into our approach with public engagement moving forward. It also helped that we had a separate process for Innovate Gateway, where we got a lot of positive feedback about having live workshops. And so that's going to be our next plan for when we move forward with workshops, is to have them live, to be able to have the breakout rooms. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to go back to doing in person, but we're kind of assuming right now that we'll be doing a lot of this work still virtually. And then I mentioned the admin drafts. And then we had eight G-PAC meetings, and I did go back through and look at, when Asense scoped out the general plan, they assumed we would have eight G-PAC meetings total. And we're at 17 so far. So that's not including the one that we have scheduled for Thursday. So we've really been relying pretty heavily on G-PAC to do that heavy lifting for the community and be part of that robust process that the council wanted to get into the details. And that doesn't include the subcommittee meetings that we've had, so it's been, you know, additional work, but I think also very productive. Next slide, Hillary. So what are we talking about in terms of next steps? I know we've been focusing on sort of our accomplishments, but because the general plan is a multi-year process, I do think it's helpful for the community to understand what's coming. And G-PAC is a very big meeting that we have scheduled for Thursday to talk about what land use alternatives we want to focus on that would be presented to both the Planning Commission and council for recommendation. So we have three alternatives identified, you know, we're not sure if they're the right ones, so that's something that G-PAC is going to talk about. So I would encourage community members to go to the Truckee 2040 page and participate as, as a community member in that process, because there's a lot of good information in there, and it really will drive sort of where Truckee lands in the next 20 years. But you can kind of see from the schedule here that this part of it only identifies sort of what G-PAC's role is for getting us through sort of the review of the land use alternatives portion, and then also looking at the individual elements. So that's been a question that we've had of, you know, what's, what's next? And so you can kind of see on the timeline there that we're going to jump through the land use alternatives right into doing the review of the draft elements. Next slide, Hillary. And then just in bigger context, and unfortunately, I don't have shown on here the downtown-specific plan, but there's, there's overlap in here that we're integrating also. But really, to kind of identify that we're hoping to finish the land use alternatives portion of the update by June, and then starting kind of with a little bit of overlap there with the element work itself, to kind of get into that policy level of discussion, and then be able to kick off the environmental impact report. And we really can't do that until we've identified what the sort of final land use alternative is that we're going to go with. So that requires council to say, yes, this is what we want. So if at any point of this, we decide that we want to have different types of public engagement, we will need to kind of adjust to address that, and that's something that I'll have in front of council as part of an Ascent Contract Amendment for the February 9th meeting. So no need to talk about it now, but I just want to put that out there, that it's something that's been on our radar. And for the downtown-specific plan, that's been a slower process, because there's a lot of graphic work that the consultants are doing with that. So they've got some urban designers who are coming up with some different illustrations. And Yumi is now our lead planner for that. And she's kind of working through the administrative draft internally with staff, so that we can move to the next steps of the public engagement for that. So we do have, like I said, that admin draft in process. So that's, that's a big accomplishment, because that plan is very old, and we almost had to throw the whole thing out to start over, to really make it up to current needs for the community. And then next slide. Climate action planning, as I said, is kind of a, you know, another wing that we wrapped under the general plan, that if we look back at what we accomplished over the last year... into the general plan that if we look back at what we accomplished over the last year, there was a ton of work that Nick helped facilitate, including the adoption of the adaptation plan. And that is factored into the work that the Subcommittee and Stakeholder Group did and has been integrated into the administrative draft climate action element that we have that we'll get to talk about shortly. And one more slide, Hillary. So kind of next steps, like I mentioned, big G-PAC meeting and then contract amendment coming so that we can hopefully meet that target completion date and say that we've got the community, the vision that they want, and we can start working on implementing it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shawna.
The council last year said, spend some money and develop some innovative programs. So I'm gonna, and pass a ballot measure. Next slide. So I put this picture up. This is one that we took of the Truckee Artist Lofts. And it's sort of a metaphor that we are, we are a housing program that is a work in progress. We're one year, there's been years that staff here have been working on planning, but we're one year into having a dedicated person working on this. And there's lots of exciting movement and learning. Next step, next slide. So per those, that paragraph of the goals, implement innovative programs. Two programs were implemented last year, the ADU Pilot Program and then the Long-Term Rental Grant Program. ADU Pilot Program, we had 16 ADUs come through our town, and of that, six of them were after the fact. Long-Term Rental Grant Program, remember, that's the partnership with Landing Locals, five homes. So there's been a total of 10, five have tenants in there, and another five, there'll be tenants moving in in January and February. So it's an update on that. Spending the housing funds, there was a lot of motivation to spend the, as much of the $2 million as possible. I have allocated, those funds have been allocated, and I'm working hard. I'll be bringing a program to you tonight to spend those funds. Next slide. So I'm just gonna go a very quick, three-minute now overview as you go into your goal-setting session, and I'm happy to get you more information. But the vision for the housing program that we set out is to strengthen the community and the economy and the environment by increasing the inventory of homes for people that work here and that they, that people who work here can afford it. So that's rentals and for-sale products. Next slide. How we do this is we're working with a framework with our goal being facilitating the increase of housing inventory, I would say deed-restricted housing inventory. We have partnerships with Mount Housing Council and Nevada County, Placer County, programs. Funding is critical to all of this, and then all of the policies that we have currently in place, always looking at those and seeing if there's ways to improve those. Next slide. So results to date, this is just a real quick slide, that we really work with a variety of ways that we increase that inventory. From the policy perspective, we get, we get inclusionary house, housing, and from our workforce, we get deed-restricted from that ordinance, 58 loans through our down payment assistance. And then we had 11 deed-restricted for sale through another development agreement. So the, this will continue to grow. It's very exciting that we have an incredible foundation of deed-restricted affordable housing that comes about through various different programs and policies. Next slide. So I think many of you have seen this slide, but as far as how the Town of Truckee works, this bridge includes sort of the affordability levels. So the orange and the teal colors are really the zone that the town works in. And the orange is the 80% of area median income, so that's considered low income. And that's what gets us our Frishman Hollows and our Henness Flats and Truckee Artist Lofts. Those are all our 80% sort of low-income affordable rental projects. The teal zone is where we're working with our accessory dwelling unit program and our long-term rental grant program. We sort of, those two programs are trying to work in that zone. And traditionally, the town, and this is something for, you know, all of you to think about, is we traditionally have stopped at about, always programs and incentives at the 120 area median income. And for, for two people, that's about $80,000 according to, for Nevada County's standards. And then for 80% AMI for two people, that's about $55,000. So next. So again, this just kind of shows you when we talk about what, so what are the programs that we're doing and who are they serving and how do we sort of define it? And we're doing a really great job of, of trying, when we're putting programs forward to you, we're always trying to think about this bridge and are we distributing our resources across the income levels, knowing that in, in our region, there's needs at every level, including the red level. Next slide. So, so just as far as results, so in the orange zone, as far as our affordable housing, deed-restricted, we have 404, another 200 are opening, or 197 are opening this year between Frishman Hollow II, Coldstream Commons, and the Truckee Artist Lofts. That's gonna really bolster our numbers. Next slide. So looking towards the future, don't hold your, don't hold me accountable to these numbers. It's just what I'm, what I'm trying to point out is that we are constantly looking at sort of ways to bring about a variety, a diversity of housing type, serving a diversity of income levels. And it's, it's exciting to think about how these little programs start to add up and we start to have a sort of a wide menu of options that we can start providing for our community. So look forward to the future. So I think with that, I'm handing it over to Bron.
Awesome, thanks Shawna. Can everyone hear me? Okay? Okay, good. So creating raving fans is not just a catchy phrase. What it's talking about is our communication and engagement with the community. So it's about developing improved and expanded communication and marketing protocols and programs for the town to allow residents and visitors to know, to know of our successes, projects, programs, and activities that the town leadership and staff are engaged in. So one of the things we really wanted to do was have people get to know our staff and really for us to be more transparent and informative for our community so that they can be engaged. Next slide, Hillary. So as a bit of an overview, because a lot has changed, we previously had a communications committee. This communications committee was together for roughly two years, and it was made up of representatives from different divisions. The, the main focus of it was primarily, primarily the website and ensuring that different divisions were, even though they were creating independently their own content, we were making sure that the town calendar wasn't overloaded and that different events and information was spread out and keeping it balanced throughout the different divisions. So it also ensured ADA compliance and that everything was recorded appropriately for public comment. After the council decided on creating some raving fans, we realized we needed to do a lot more additional communications and have more plans. So the raving fans committee took the place of the communications committee. It's similar in its structure, it was made up of different divisions, but more of a collaborative way so that the goal is to increase content by working together and figuring out how we can be more creative and introduce our staff, show our staff as, you know, community members who are engaged and care about Truckee as well, and really highlight all the projects we're doing and, and keep it all involved and get more, you know, public input on things that we're doing. So this, this committee was made by, was structured to have line staff with a number of department heads then overseeing it, and then Judy Price leading as the communications director. We had our first meeting on February, in February in 2020. And as you can imagine, in March 2020, COVID became a challenge and a priority for our communications efforts. So on March 10, 2020, Truckee, the Truckee Town Council declared an emergency. On March 13th, we asked that the community participate in all of our meetings from home. So a big shift that we had to make. And then on March 19th, Governor Newsom put the shelter in place order in place. So that was a huge change for us. We had to think about staff working from home, opening the Town of Truckee EOC, Emergency Operations Center. And during that, Debrae Acuff and I then became the Public Information Officers for the Emergency Operations Center, Debrae for the Police Department, and myself for the town. So communications became key to keeping our community informed and reiterating the rapidly changing information from the state and county, which, as you can tell, we are continuing to do now. So Town Manager Jeff Lux temporarily assigned me to manage the communications, not knowing how long this intensified communication would go on. Although a lot of the communication was connected to COVID, we also wanted to still make sure that we were keeping our community informed about the different projects that we were doing so that they could keep, you know, keep informed about what was happening there. But this role required collaboration with Plaza and Nevada County and other special districts. You may remember on 4th of July, we had to cancel all the events and we did a big regional communication so that it was unified and to, to really show that we are working together when it comes to COVID. And there's lots of examples of, we did, we've done videos with Tahoe Forest, we've worked with the school district, all these different ways where we need to collaborate and show unity during such a tough time. So part of it is the prompt dissemination of information to the community, to our council, and to also answer questions from the media. As Mayor Clovestat and Councilmember probably know very well, the, the media like to go to them directly. So it's great for them to have that extra support so that we can answer their questions correctly. So in June 2020, this assignment became more permanent after seeing the benefits and positive outcomes from the community. Next slide. So I just wanted to do a really quick overview of what kind of communication tools we really do have and what we have been using in the last year. So we have Facebook and we have four different platforms. We have the Town of Truckee, Truckee Police, Animal Services, and Keep Truckee Green. None of those are new, but the Instagram is new for all but the Keep Truckee Green. And the Town of Truckee actually has 5,100 followers since February, which is quite extensive for such a small little town. We have Twitter, which, we only have Keep Truckee Green and the police, and I'm working on verifying the Town of Truckee Twitter. We have Nextdoor, which our agency can be part of this neighborhood hub, basically. It's a platform for different neighborhoods, but there's 9,657 members in our area. So it is a way for us to get important information to them. We then have the Town of Truckee website where we have news items and e-notifications, which a lot of our news items become part of. People subscribe, and we currently have over 200, 2,000 subscribers. And then when Jen came on, we started the talk of the town newsletter, which is our monthly newsletter. We also then have the Truckee Police website. Part of that is the Never Miss a Beat newsletter, which we've had for about two years. It replaced the annual report that we previously did because it's more current and keeps people up to date with the stats and current events happening with the Police Department easier. And then we have the Keep Truckee Green website as well. Both of those ones are new, and I know Erica will talk more about her website after, after I finish. But some additional tools, one thing I really want to highlight is our IT department had to pivot hugely to manage, you know, virtual town halls, web-based events, just like we're doing right now. You know, it's, it's a huge pivot to still be able to connect with our community. And, you know, that included a whole heap of people having to take computers back home and all sorts of things like that. So we also have Tahoe Truckee Media who we're using right now, and we use them for, you know, a range of things, Better and Stay, things like that. 101.5 FM Truckee Tahoe Radio. You may have noticed, especially during the beginning of COVID, that a lot of our staff and elected officials were on there. And we're, we're working to potentially use them a lot more in 2021. We improved our media relations, trying to work more closely with our local media and tapping a lot more press releases and trying to connect with them as much as possible. It really is, you know, a give and take with the, with the media, and we, we really want to work well with them. We also improved our collaboration, like I said earlier, doing a lot of joint messaging with TDMA or Park and Rec, whatever it might be, with different, different strategies and different ways that we can. We also increased videos, creativity, content creation programs and training. So over, since February, we have done over 470 different social media posts just from the Town of Truckee, and that includes 23 different videos. So we're really trying to find different ways to connect and use different platforms for different audiences. So like I said, you know, we have all these different platforms and different websites for different parts of our town, but we have different audiences. Like the Animal Services Division has a different audience to the Police Department or the town, and not everyone wants to see what's happening in the Police Department. And they have different news for different reasons. So that's why it's so nice and valuable to have these different platforms. And so I did want to add, just to show the actual engagement that we are getting. And one example I have is on September 22nd, 2020, the Truckee Town Council meeting had the Short-Term Rental and Noise Ordinance. We had over 300 emails of public comment relating to the single agenda item. And we put up the agenda on our social media every fortnight. And that's over 300 compared to the 234 written comments that we had overall in 2019. So it just shows that, yes, not everyone will write in about every single issue. And that was a really big issue that a lot of people had a lot of passionate opinions about, and they wanted to put out there. But it shows that people are accessing this information, they're staying up to date with things that are happening in the town, and they want to engage on things that are important to them. So there's definitely more to be done to include those harder-to-reach populations in our community who may not have access to online platforms or may not have English as their first language. And that's something we really hope to work on with our community partners and finding new tools for 2021. Hopefully, with new, new access and better access as well as COVID becomes something in the background rather than the forefront. So next slide. So just quickly, I did want to show a little bit that, you know, I'm really proud, Debrae and I worked really hard on truckeepolice.com. And just to show that there's quite a few different aspects to the website. We encompass disaster preparedness, police services, support services, animal services, and parking. So we really want to show that the Police Department does encompass so many different areas. And, you know, we want to be as transparent as possible, especially in this day and age. We really want to put a face to our, our offices as well as all of our other staff and show the value in having them. So as you can see there, we have our School Resource Officer and Officer of the Year, different things, and, you know, it's really an educational platform as well. So next slide, Hillary. Just as an example, this is our disaster preparedness little interactive graphic. If you go on the website, you can click on different parts and it explains to you exactly how you can prepare for an emergency. And that is just one of the tools that we use for, from the Police Department for disaster preparedness along with some of the other stuff we do. So I'll hand it over to Erica to talk about her amazing website as well.
Thanks so much, Bron. Hi, council members. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of some of our main outreach. I'm going to give you a brief overview of some of our main outreach platforms from Keep Truckee Green. And as Bron mentioned, the number one thing is our new Keep Truckee Green website. Some other highlights are the volunteer turnout, which we spoke about briefly before. And lastly, our social media bilingual outreach. Next slide. Thanks. So this is our website, keeptruckiegreen.com. If you haven't visited, we have all sorts of information on here now that is beyond just our recycling guide. So we receive 40,000 views per month and this has been a steady increase since we rolled out our new programs a few years ago. And I think some of the information that really just shows that we've had effective outreach and driving behavior change is that we've had a 250% increase in the tonnage collected of green waste from the average green bag collection year. And we just got back some pretty exciting statistics about our blue cart usage, which has collected 82% more tons of recycling in the last quarter of last year, from 2020 to 2019. So we completed our blue cart rollout, so all neighborhoods in Truckee now have the blue carts. And it just goes to show that people are utilizing them and receiving the information that we're providing. So beyond the recycling information, like I said, we have other information on our website. You can read the blog with current events. There's an event calendar as well as a monthly newsletter that you can sign up for that actually just went out today. And then most importantly, the next slide, please. And if you want to hit play, Hillary, we have a sustainability dashboard. So I just wanted to give you a live view. This is the homepage of the website. When you click on measurable success, you'll see a comprehensive look at our sustainability kind of snapshot. So you can click and drill into different metrics from energy to our communications, outreach engagement, housing. And then within each metric, you can click on the different action items for individuals as well as looking at why this is important for sustainability in Truckee. So this is all in the sustainability dashboard on the website and it is being updated as we have new data information. Thanks. So I know we've touched on this already, but just wanted to again mention the great volunteer turnout we had in the last year. We had over 1,200 volunteers come out for Truckee Day and the monthly Truckee Litter Core events. And that just really goes to show that we have a super engaged community as well as one that is passionate about litter cleanup. Next slide, please. Thanks. So we also have a very engaged social media following on Keep Truckee Green. And we are proud that we've got all of our information bilingual, both in English and Spanish on our Keep Truckee Green Facebook and Instagram. So we have been putting out different tips as well as kind of some fun facts about sustainability in the Town of Truckee. And please give us a follow if you're not already. And that brings me to the end of mine and I will pass it off to Hillary.
Thanks, Erica. Now I'd like to briefly update you on some of our progress towards the remaining 2019 goals that weren't already touched on, which council carried forward as continued goals for 2020. With each of these goal areas, staff sifted through town actions over the past year to provide just a handful of key accomplishments. In the interest of time, I'm not going to speak to all of them, but that we have listed here, but will briefly highlight a couple from each goal area. First, the goal of working with community partners to support community resiliency, disaster preparedness, and forest stewardship. This past year, we worked with the county to develop a countywide zone-based evacuation system. We also completed Truckee's first ever climate change adaptation plan, which along with the Climate Action Plan will be incorporated into the general plan update. For the goal of achieving the town's adopted goals for renewable energy and reducing our carbon footprint. First, in 2020, started with a course correction by our previous council, which made, which was made last January. And at that time, council decided not to move forward with a large photovoltaic installation that would have accomplished the town's 100% renewable electricity by 2020 goal. While that may seem counterintuitive, given our town and community's strong focus on climate, that decision was made because the Truckee Donner Public Utility District has made such significant progress in its renewable portfolio. And that high percent of renewable energy now coming from our utility provider has substantially decreased the net carbon benefit of a town-produced solar project. So with that change in course and direction from our council, we then focused on projects that will have a more significant greenhouse gas savings benefit. And the town is on track to pilot using renewable diesel fuel this year with a goal of converting all diesel equipment to renewable diesel and installing a new large renewable diesel fuel tank by the end of 2021. We also have plans in place to partner with the Public Utility District and Truckee Fire to expand this program to fuel their equipment as well. And we're thrilled to have the town take that leadership role in extending renewable diesel to our partner agencies. Next up, for our goal of revitalizing the downtown, the river corridor, and mixed-use corridors, a couple of highlights from the past year include completion of the West River Park Master Plan and completing 30% design on the West River Streetscape and the Reimagine Bridge Street projects. For the town's alternative transportation and public transit goal, this past year, 1.6 additional miles of paved trail were constructed with new sections in the Coldstream and Georgia Ranch developments. The town also completed the Transit Center Relocation Feasibility Study. And a new transit center would provide the space we need in order to accommodate the TART service expansions that are envisioned in our long-range transit plan. Next is our economic development goal of supporting a diverse economic and employment base. And this is one example of an area where we pivoted dramatically this past year due to COVID and focused on providing support to our existing businesses with support programs, including the Truckee Winter Wonderland Program, providing activation and outdoor dining for downtown, to support our downtown businesses, as well as the Nevada County Relief Fund and the Sierra Resilience Fund, as well as ongoing communication efforts with our business community related to COVID and changing business restrictions and available support services. And finally, we have a goal of working collaboratively with partner agencies to enhance community services. Out of a necessity, our COVID response has required really ramping up our collaboration efforts and strengthening those relationships has been one of the silver linings of COVID. One example of that being our collaborative messaging with a number of partners, as Bron suggested, and that includes Tahoe Forest Hospital, Nevada County, the Chamber, and TDMA, among others. In addition to that, we've also continued to participate in collaborative planning efforts for the new Truckee Library. There are many more projects and accomplishments we could highlight under each of these goals, but I hope that gives you at least a flavor of the type of good work that has taken place this past year related to our 2019 and 2020 council goals. And with that, I'll turn it back to Jen to talk about what's ahead.
Great. Thank you, Hillary, and thank you to all the staff that participated. I felt it was important as the new town manager and also for our council to see all the good work that was done this past year, both the priorities and goals as well as the unexpected accomplishments. So we're happy to share the detail of this slide presentation. I know we went through it fairly quickly and we weren't able to highlight everything. So if that would be useful for the council, we can send that out as well. But this is really setting the framework for our upcoming priority setting session, which is happening next Monday and Tuesday. That session is a public meeting and it's noticed on our website. It will be zoomed based, given where we are with COVID and still in the purple tier at this time. And we'll have some materials and information coming out soon regarding that. So if you have any questions, myself or staff, I just really do want to thank all the staff for all the hard work they shared and for participating in the update tonight.
That was tremendously helpful. I don't recall ever seeing one of those done before. So thank you very much, Jen. Thank you, everybody that participated. And what was most interesting to me is that there were a lot of pivots. And as much as, you know, there are things that I'm disappointed in because we couldn't get to them, I am so proud of our staff for being able to still hold those visions but recognize the current needs of our community and pivot and adapt and adopt and still accomplish so much. And just for those of you at home, I want to again remind you of the first slide where 80% of staff's time is already pretty dedicated. So all of this is accomplished really in that extra 20% of their work week, which I know, watching how late I see some people here, that most of the council goals are being done after the 40 hours are already in. So I just really appreciate that. I really appreciate all the work from the staff. I would love to see that presentation, just to have that as we go into our retreat. And, because this council doesn't know anything different, right? It's going to be virtual. Hopefully, we'll be able to all get together here in council chambers sometime in the future, but it will not be in time to do our goals as we have all, as we've all accepted. For the council members that don't know, I did work directly with Jen quite extensively on trying to figure out a way to either delay the goal settings and the retreat so that we could wait until it was appropriate for us to be in person. But that just, there's too many ramifications of that for the budget process. So we are going to stick to our original dates. We are going to do our best virtually and look forward to a team-building session sometime possibly this summer. So with that, Councilmember Pollavee, do you have questions for staff on any of this?
No questions, and I'll just keep my remarks super duper brief because I said a lot of this back when we transitioned out about a month, two months ago now, however long it's been. But, you know, just a big, a big thank you and kudos to, you know, so many of our amazing staff. It's been, 2020 was amazing, was a challenge, excuse me. And to be able to not just pivot and deal with COVID in the way that we did, but to continue outreach on the general plan, to pursue all of our housing programs and basically take a communications department that honestly didn't exist on March 1st. And, you know, that first morning that Bron called me, I think it was like March 20th or something like that, you know, when we first started plotting what we were going to be doing out and actually how we were going to talk about all this. It's pretty, pretty darn amazing and I'm really, really happy to be a part of this great team. So keep it up, team. You're doing great. And thanks so much for all of it. It's really, and this is a great way to review it and hopefully something that we can continue to do annually because I think we have been missing this. We have been missing, you know, what did we do and how did we get here and why did we get here? So clearly, tons more work to do, but great steps in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pollavee. Councilmember Zabriski, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you and join in the comments that have already been made. Jen, Danielle, and the rest of you who put together that presentation did an excellent job. I certainly appreciate it and I agree with Councilmember Pollavee. It would be good to make this an annual event. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Henderson.
Thank you. Yep, reiterating what everyone has said. Thank you so much to everyone for all of your hard work. I did have just one or two quick comments. Danielle, on the general plan, I just, I really appreciated seeing the timeline laid out as you did. So thank you so much for that. I also wanted to mention that as we think about our public engagement moving forward, and I know you mentioned, hope to do some live, you know, virtual workshops in all likelihood. The PUD, of course, just went through a huge workshops. Over 500 community participants in about eight groups or so that they did in a week and a half or two weeks. So I would just encourage us to reach out to our counterparts at the PUD. I'm sure they have a lot of great insight on, you know, what worked really well and if there's anything that they would, you know, alter potentially in the future. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Rymack.
I would just like to say thank you as well. It's impressive how much staff you do on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So thank you. And then also specifically Bron and Erica, I really appreciate the dedication to reaching our entire community and releasing messages and doing social media in Spanish as well as English. So thank you for that. I think that's fantastic. And thanks to Shauna, Danielle, and everyone else. Again, it's impressive what you do and this is really helpful as a new council member too to see all this before we go into our priority setting next week. So thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I would like to just reiterate to all of those at home. If you haven't gone on to the interactive website for keeptruckiegreen.com, please do so. It's, there's so much great information there and something that everybody can do in their own home to make it a little bit more greener and to reduce your carbon footprint just a little bit more. Because if we all just do a little bit extra, that's going to get us a lot further along with our town-wide goals of zero carbon emissions. So with that, I'm going to bring it back and see if we have any public comment on this. No public comment. Jen, anything else?
No, thank you for the feedback and we will be doing similar updates throughout the years as we identify new priorities.
Excellent. And so I believe now we're on 5.3, which is Town Manager Update.
Yes, thank you so much. I just have a few announcements. I did want to congratulate, I think everybody knows at this point, but congratulate Chief Billingsley. He has been selected to serve as our new Chief of Police. He has been our interim Chief of Police for the last six months. He has 27 years of experience in law enforcement. We did have quite an extensive recruitment process. We had a chance to meet with very highly qualified candidates and Chief Billingsley really stood out with his vision for Truckee policing and how he plans to carry forward with the tradition of good community Truckee-style policing. So I'm excited to welcome him aboard and into the official seat of chief and look forward to working with him and see him carry forward that vision for the department and for the town in the future. So congratulations, chief, and welcome aboard. Also, I did want to give a couple updates on COVID. There was a regional, the regional stay-at-home order was lifted yesterday for the entire state. What that means is that most of the state is now in the purple widespread tier. There's a few counties that are in the red tier and I believe one county that's in the orange tier. But there's no change for Truckee, no impact for Truckee. Nevada County is still in the purple tier at this time. So that means outside dining is still okay, but there's no indoor dining. All the same restrictions that we've been under for the last couple of weeks. I also wanted to say and remind people that thank you for your continued efforts at stopping the spread. Clearly, we're on the right path. We're moving in the right direction. Still have a ways to go as vaccinations are becoming more readily available. But please wash your hands, wear your face masks, continue to remain vigilant, and we should continue to progress along the roadmap to recovery. Also, on the note of vaccinations, the governor's administration did issue a press release today announcing some changes in the vaccination delivery system. They outlined three changes. We don't have a lot of information on those. So I'm going to touch briefly on that and encourage people to stay tuned to our Facebook and social media pages. And as soon as we have clarification, we will certainly share that on our social media outlets. The governor's administration plans to simplify eligibility. So beginning in February, there's going to be a new statewide standard for healthcare workers, individuals, overseas. for healthcare workers, individuals over 65, education and childcare workers, and emergency service workers. These are all people that are eligible under the Phase 1B Tier 1 group. The future groups will become eligible based on age. Age and the standard will move in unison across all the 58 counties in the state. So, we'll be having some revised eligibility or simplified eligibility criteria coming forward. Also, there's a new portal that the state is implementing to let people know when they're eligible to receive the vaccination. It's called My Turn Today. It's been piloted down in Los Angeles and San Diego counties. They're still in that pilot phase, expecting it to roll out to the rest of the state mid-February. And it's a system where a resident or anybody can sign up to receive a notification when they become eligible for the vaccination, where they can sign up and track statistics. So, we'll share more information again on that on our social media platforms once that becomes available. And then lastly, the state is working at addressing the vaccination availability process. Council will note that there's an advocacy letter on our consent calendar advocating for vaccinations. That's the issue that we're really experiencing as a community right now. There's just simply not enough vaccines to go around. So, the state and the governor's administration is aware of that, and they're working on ways to improve distribution. Also, for the council members, I'd like to remind you to please mute yourself if you're not speaking just to help avoid feedback issues. And then lastly, we have a winter weather event predicted for tonight and the next few days. That event has been upgraded to a blizzard warning effective at 10:00 PM tonight. So, with that, I'd like to recommend that we try to end the council meeting by 9:00 PM while many of us are able to join remotely. There's a fair number of staff here at Town Hall like to be respectful to their needs to get home safely before the weather and travel conditions become an issue for that. So, as we approach the nine o'clock hour, if we're still going, I'll bring that to your attention. If council's willing, we can defer any items to a later date. And I also asked Dan Wilkins, our Public Works Director, to give a very short update about what residents in the council can expect with snowplow removal and inclement weather that's headed our way.
Thanks, Jen. Yeah, so as Jen mentioned, the National Weather Service has issued a blizzard warning for our region for tonight through end of the day Thursday or midday Thursday. So, winter storm warnings are commonplace here in Truckee, and we're pretty used to them. Last blizzard warning we had, I think, was three years ago. I think in that event, the freeway closed for a couple of days in a row despite Caltrans' best efforts. We had some of our local roads became impassable for short periods of time, particularly up in the town of Donner area. So, we'll be doing our best with the Public Works Department and assistance from the Police Department and other divisions to keep the roads and trails open. But these are the kinds of events that actually stretch us beyond our capacity from time to time. So, don't leave your cars parked in the road. They'll get buried, then they might get hit. We'll try not to have that happen. Don't leave cars parked overnight downtown so we can keep the downtown cleaned up. And then lastly, I would expect there's a lot of pent-up powder demand by the skiers that visit our region. And if the roads clear up, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I think we could expect a large number of visitors in town, probably busy ski areas. And then hopefully, the freeway doesn't close again Sunday night and trap a bunch of people up here. But sometimes that happens too. So, anyway, just another normal week in Truckee, and everyone enjoy themselves.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, I think this time it's going to be a little bit reversed. Those times where we have the blizzards that start on Friday and end on Sunday, those are the worst. Thank you for that update as well, Jen. So, the, back into the purple tier, and we expect to be in that for who knows how long? Or do we have any idea?
At this point, we don't have an idea. They do keep updating numbers regularly. I think our ICU capacity at this point is projected at 18% or around there, four weeks out. So, we are above the 15% capacity, but we have not heard word of when we could go possibly back into the red tier. So, hold tight. We will get there. Continue to be vigilant with the guidance.
Well, the good news of that is we all know how to do that.
Yes.
Yes. But it does still mean that we are not gathering, which is why we're not doing our retreat in person. So, just everybody out there, we're holding to that standard. We expect you to as well. And then lastly, I just want to say a personal congratulations to Chief Billingsley. I'm so thrilled to have you in this permanent position. And thank you for your service to date, and thank you for being willing to continue to serve our community. So, with that, do we have any council members that have any questions or comments on Jen's update? I can't see them actually, so we'll just go through the list again. Polavy, do you have anything?
He's shaking his head no.
Okay.
Just remember, I reminded you to bring a fourth computer with you so you could be looking at us and not have to crane your neck, just for the record.
You did, and it's here, but for some reason, the cascade look keeps disappearing. So, okay, I have you back. Thank you. Councilmember Zabriski?
Congratulations to Chief Billingsley. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Congratulations, Chief. We're really fortunate to have you.
And Councilmember Romack.
I'll second that. Congrats, Chief Billingsley. Look forward to continuing to work with you.
Okay, and with that, we're going to move on to our consent agenda item. I'm assuming we don't have any public comment on the council. Okay. So, we have actually some really exciting stuff on the council, on the consent agenda. The minutes of our January 12th meeting, notice of completion for the Estates Drive Transit Shelter Project, which I've never seen a public project come in so close to its budget. So, that was amazing. The Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program application. The, and then the letter of advocacy requesting additional COVID-19 vaccine allocations for Nevada County. And I'll just say, I'm really excited about both of those last ones too. The grant program applications look tremendous. Our staff is incredibly successful typically with grant applications. I hope we get those as well. And then this advocacy letter for vaccines. I think it's no secret, we are underserved in the number of vaccines that we are receiving, in particular since we have such a large population that's over 65 in our county. So, we are trying to do something about that, and we're going to send a letter to all of our legislative partners. So, with that, does staff want to pull any consent item?
No consent items to pull. I would just remind the council that we did send the letter in advance. I signed it on behalf of the town to Ms. Clint Tonk and Feinstein. They had conversations happening over the weekend and needed that in advance.
Yes, and thank you for doing so. We did get that message out to them early, and I think having the full council support of this advocacy letter will definitely help. Does any member of the council want to pull an item? Seeing none, do we have any public wanting to pull an item that you know of? No? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda. For calendar.
I will second.
Excellent. Judy, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Polavy?
Yes.
Councilmember Zabriski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Romack?
Yes.
And Mayor Claus Todd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have only two discussion items, and I'm wondering, you know, at 6:30, how long will the presentation take for the, for item 7.1? Do we want to try to do that and then take a quick break or take a break now?
I would suggest we proceed with the presentation and then take a break.
Okay, well, let's do so then. So, item 7.1 is Housing Program Expansion. We are recommending Accessory Dwelling Unit ADU Pilot Program and Loan Incentive Package for new and unpermitted ADU construction and permitting, otherwise known as an amnesty program. And this is going to be presented by Shawna, Shawna Doherty, our Housing Program Manager. Take it away, Shawna.
Hey, so I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see that? Yep.
Yes, we are seeing your presenter's view so we can see the slide coming up as well, just so you are aware.
Right, this happened before.
Yeah. It still works for us.
There you go.
Okay.
How's that?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, we're getting good at this. So, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Shawna Doherty, Housing Program Manager for the town of Truckee. I am presenting on an ADU program, but I wanted to start off by reminding both the council and also the community that ADUs are just one of the many ways that we're tackling our housing needs. I'm going to be focusing in on ADUs tonight, specifically ADU incentives. But if you go to the Town of Truckee Housing Programs page, you'll find more information on the variety of things that tools and strategies we're using to increase the inventory of housing in Truckee. So, tonight before you is a request to council to expand the current ADU Pilot Program to include new loan and grant incentives in the amount of $970,000 to accelerate both new and unpermitted ADUs. I want to point out to council before we dive into the details of this very detailed presentation that the strategy has always been with ADUs that we want to do a lot in the next five years, it's four years now, to really jumpstart the ADU market in our region, knowing based on research and success in areas like Portland and Bozeman, Montana, and Canada and LA, that where the reason they're seeing so much success with ADUs in their communities is really the private market stepping up to build the ADUs. Government, we can do as much as we can to make our code easy, to make the information easy, to support our homeowners going through the process, provide funding tools. But at the end of the day, if you can't find anyone to help you do the work, you're not going to get your ADU built or permitted. So, all of these strategies are intended to work with the building community and the construction industry to try to build the market, the private market, so that in the next few years, we'll see lots of ADUs and lots of people that you can call to do these. So, just so you know, sort of the overarching goal is to build the capacity of the private market. So, to get going, I'm just going to remind us, there's a lot going on, you know, where, how we ended up where we are tonight. Last year, last February, council approved the ADU Pilot Program, a $500,000 allocation to jumpstart a new ADU program using funds out of the one-time Housing General Fund allocation. I'll get into sort of what we did since then as far as building the program. But we'll roll forward to November 10th. As you recall, lots of work being done with our short-term rental ordinance as well as the great work that Jamie LeChance did with updating, making amendments to our ADU code to make it much more clear, in alignment with the state, and really foundational to building this ADU program because it, all of our materials are based off of that code. So, what these two rulings, so the short-term rental ordinance and the ADU Code Amendment did is it really brought to light a state law that was already in place, but everyone was much more aware of it because we were sending a lot of communications to our registered short-term rental list and talking about it a lot at Planning Commission and with council. And what happened was about several of the homeowners that had registered short-term rentals that were not permitted. And we estimate that there's about 10 or 20 of them because when people previously registered as short-term rentals, they didn't indicate what kind of unit it was. We didn't really have data on it. Planning staff has been working at going through all of our registered short-term rental list and identifying what type of unit it is. But, and then based on the public comments and the people that came forward, we estimate that there's about 10 to 20 that would be impacted by these new rules, meaning because their unit is not permitted, they would not be able to continue moving forward with getting a short-term rental certificate. As a result of this, there was discussion about having staff look at some ways to potentially provide an ADU-type amnesty program. And so, what I'm bringing back to you tonight is a summary of that research as well as staff's recommendation on what to do with that information. So, a little bit to ground us before we talk about new things, I just wanted to remind everybody what...
Shawna, can I interrupt you for a second, please?
Sure.
Sorry about that. Your presentation is getting caught off, so we can't see everything. I'm going to suggest that maybe we take our break now, and Chris is going to come down and see if he can help adjust your formatting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right.
Okay, so do we want to take a 10-minute?
I think that would be a good amount of time.
Okay, 6:50 is when we'll return. Thank you. Thank you.
Intention to have some type of incentive. So the resources that we've developed over a little under a year, as you know, we have a, this is just a snapshot of the branding, the housing program so that our number one goal is just to make it easy for homeowners and builders to find our information and contact me. We have an ADU page on there that has now showcases our wonderful new ADU code that's six pages long and very easy to understand. And then from there, we built simple sheets for people as far as fact sheets, and then we'll have FAQs, and we're just continuing to add information to that. The second component we have is, we're calling this our technical assistance. This is where our AD, our new ADU team comes in. We have a town ADU team. So anytime someone calls our office, the town, all of the ADU inquiries come to me. We've been tracking this since July, and we've had 57 people that I've talked to multiple times. Fifty-seven is just the number of people. And this has been really the area that I think people are most supportive of. When we've talked to other jurisdictions and agencies that are doing ADU programs, they really stress that this piece has been key to their success. Helping, what's most intimidating for homeowners is navigating our process, trying to understand the code, trying to understand the building permit process, all of the different requirements. And so the way we do it is, I'm the first line of conversation. I try to point them back to our website, read the material, call me with questions. When they get to the point where they're really ready to apply the code to their specific parcel or their specific constraints, again, I try to talk to them as much as possible. And then what I do is I set up, we're calling them consults, and Jamie, Jamie and I are senior planner on the, on the team, along with Carolina, if there's a fee or a permit question. I set up about a half an hour Zoom call. We pull up their, their parcel, and we have a chat about their questions about what are the options that they can do, and what are the setbacks, and what are the constraints for their particular project. And this is all leading up to sort of like a feasibility for them being able to submit their permits. We do this for both permit, new builds, and also people who are going through the, after the fact is what we call it, but they have an illegal or an unpermitted unit. So we do the same thing, provide resources and technical support for both of those. We're not just talking to homeowners, we're talking to HOAs who are in the process of updating their CCNRs to reflect our new code. I'm talking to realtors, for people that are interested to know what the rules are. And overall, the feedback's been very positive because we have a consistent team. We get back to them regularly, and because there's people that call multiple times, we've built relationships with them. We set out, as you may remember, not, not the new people, but we, we looked at sort of what's our baseline, and there were, when we started to count the number of ADUs that were permitted through the town, it was about 44 between 2014 and 2018. So we thought, you know, 15 is a reasonable number, of which we were hoping that, that number got caught up. But our hope was 15 a year, so 75 over that, what's going on here? Our goal was to create 75, of which, over five years, of which 15 would be deed restricted. So we, we always thought for those deed restrictions, we would have to offer some kind of incentive. So the results for year one, for the 2020 ADU building permits, like I said, 57 inquiries. This is an update to your staff report numbers. I had originally said 18, but when we reran the numbers, there's 15 that have been permitted through the Town of Truckee. Six of those are after the fact, so those are unpermitted units that came through our system to become legally permitted. And then interestingly, of those six after the fact permits, three of them went ahead and used, applied to our long-term rental grant program. And because they were legal units, so the story is, they would, these unpermitted units contacted landing locals about our long-term rental grant program. They were asked if it was a legally permitted unit. It wasn't. They came to me, I worked with them, and Carolina worked with them, and the building team, to go through the after the fact process. Once they had their certificate of occupancy, they could go back and apply for that $3,000. And so that was something we envisioned happening. We didn't know it was going to happen that fast, and that was pretty exciting. So we are proposing tonight an ADU incentive package. This is what we're calling, we, the word amnesty's been used a lot, and amnesty just really is defined as a program put in place to, that has sort of timeframes and incentives in place to bring into compliance all of that sort of uncounted or unpermitted units. And, you know, it gives, it gives the insinuation that there's no rules that are going to be applied. But in fact, when we look at the research, it's really just putting a bracket of time around it, and then each jurisdiction sort of did their own version of sort of relaxing standards or waiving fees during that particular timeframe. The summary of research, we went out and looked at eight programs. Seven of them were in California, and one of them was in Colorado, as was mentioned in some of the comments that council, some of the questions and the comments from council over the last couple of days. There really was a wide range of results in those programs. Really, when I've talked to some of those programs about sort of what is the key to their success, it goes back to one of my original statements, which is really offering that technical assistance and that information. And in all of the cases, when these entities did offer ADU, excuse me, amnesty programs, it was always with the intention of increasing the inventory of housing or, or safety, like in the case of Santa Cruz. Never did, did any of the jurisdictions that I was able to find implement any kind of ADU amnesty program for the purposes of extending short-term rentals. Always and all of them, they, they create a sense of urgency to sort of bring those unpermitted units into compliance in a short amount of time, so staff wasn't doing things over a long period of time, and so that people were coming in and doing it. And again, like I said, the best results came when the program was coupled with other elements such as technical assistance and communications. One interesting case study is that Claflin County recently added a person that is 30 hours a week doing technical assistance. They haven't provided incentives or really rolled out their marketing, and they had 100 permits last year. And granted, 85 of them, or 85 to 90 were downhill in areas like Auburn and Rockland, but they really speak to the, the technical assistance side. So what we're proposing, staff's proposing, is really taking the, the conversations over the last year with the customers that have been calling in, the conversations that happened at the planning commission and town council, looking at what other communities are doing, and remembering that really what we've always wanted to do is both, we really, our overarching goal is to increase the inventory and the diversity of housing, and always felt that ADUs moved us towards both our housing and our sustainability goals. So in that, we really didn't want to propose to council just an amnesty program that would focus just on those unpermitted ADUs. We really wanted to offer sort of a holistic approach that would provide incentives both for the new builds, as well as a pathway for the unpermitted units to come into compliance. So that's what we're offering you tonight, is just an expansion of a program that's already happening with a menu of options based on, as one thing that we've learned is that every single call that we get, everybody's got a different situation. And so we wanted to provide an incentive package that has a menu that people can choose that's best for them. And that's what we're trying to do tonight. This is in your staff package. I'm just going to do a high level here. Had some great comments and questions from council that I, I really was answering questions as I was building this, this presentation for you, so incorporated a lot of the feedback that was very helpful. Talked to, to Sierra Board of Realtors this morning, and also to several conversations with Contractors Association. And so just as my metaphor in the photo I put of the Truckee Artist Lofts, it is a, it is a evolving program development. So you'll notice some changes in here from the staff report. So we have two, two sets of incentives, two, two loans, two grants. I'll get into the grants next. So from the loans, we have a track for new ADU construction, and then a track for those who have existing units and unpermitted. On the left side, just high level, everything on that left column under the new construction loan is dictated by the funding we got from the state. So that's a, it's called a PLHA loan. It's an SB2 funding source, and it's an allocation to the Town of Truckee. It's four years, it's $400,000. It will create two loans a year at $50,000. And all of these restrictions underneath were set by the state. They will require prevailing wages. I have a slide, I'm going to get into prevailing wages, but it's just prescriptive on what we can. And so we built the other product on the right, sort of to be a compliment, and again, back to the menu. The other thing to point out about the new ADU loan is that it has a size limit, and that again gets at sort of our climate goals of smaller is less impactful. So on the unpermitted loan side, those are $15,000 each, being paid for by the Town General Fund and Measure K. Again, we're setting a two-year, from what we learned, it's, it's a two-year application process. We, once you get the letter, you have a year to permit it. We really want to create a sense of urgency that if you don't come in, then, then the money runs out, and you will just have to go through our normal process. So we really want to drive action by creating a short window. We wanted to make this, we know that, based on feedback from council, that we realize that it's pretty inexpensive right now to get, to get, to borrow money, and so we want to make this attractive. So we moved, this is confusing here, but we've moved from a 2% loan term to 1%, to just be a little bit more attractive to our community. So we shifted that from the staff report from 2% to 1%. It's, it's worth noting that the way that these loans work is the way that we worked with our consultant, Joanne, who's managed all of our down payment and other loan products, and helped us apply for grants, and she's a pro at helping us set up the details of these loans. And how this will work is you'll get a loan award letter, and then you will do your work, and you'll submit expenses for reimbursement up to the amount of your loan award letter. So it's, they're all reimbursements. So the second, two sets of incentives in the menu are grants. As a reminder, loans you have to pay back, grants are not money that you have to pay back. So we have two grant products, again, same structure. Left side is for new ADUs. The right is for the unpermitted. Again, the whole goal of this set of incentives is to be attractive to the community. So we worked over the last week with staff and with the Contractors Association to really try to offer incentives that don't trigger prevailing wage at all times, meaning that not all of them are triggering it, and I'll show you another slide to get into that. So we've shifted this, the strikeout is what we proposed in the staff report. After further review and conversations with staff, really relooking at ways to make it more attractive to the customer and council feedback. So we've upped the grant amount for new ADU construction, knowing that there will be a trigger of prevailing wage, but we added more funding to that pot with hopes that that sort of offsets that requirement. And then we lowered the amount for unpermitted, because if you, we, we can give out a thousand dollar grants without triggering the prevailing wage. A little bit about the amounts. We were intending for these grant amounts to be really helpful for people going through the permit process, the required documentation, fees can sometimes be daunting. This, of course, doesn't cover everything, but it does help a little bit towards that. And that's what we've heard a lot from conversations with people, that 1,000 does not trigger prevailing wage, and there's no, this is the only incentive that will have no deed restriction. So a lot of questions came up about prevailing wage requirements. For those listening in, prevailing wage, as a government entity, when we provide funding, we are required to pay, that whoever receives the funding pays their staff at prevailing wages that are set by Department of Industrial Relations every year. So that's a great thing. We support that. But we also want to be able to provide incentives, knowing that many of the small contractors in our region, and because of how small some of these grants and loans are, might not engage or, or be interested in working on these projects if we don't lower the bar as far as requirements. So kind of went through each of the incentive packages and, and laid out sort of based on questions, which ones would require prevailing wage and which ones don't. So the, the first one is the, the new ADU loan, that's a $50,000 one funded by the state that has to have prevailing wage per their requirements. Unpermitted ADU loan at the 15,000 mark, because it's a below-market loan, it will not trigger prevailing wage. The new ADU grant, 25,000, yes, you will. And then the unpermitted track of the grant, the $1,000 won't. We still, we understand this is still a conversation and work to be done. We're going to continue to work with the Contractors Association and with staff to figure out ways to provide information, again, to our local building community about this, and, and ways to make this path a little bit easier. But we think we have a pretty good way of making some of these things attractive to people.
Shauna, I apologize for another interruption. I'm sorry, was that the conclusion of your presentation, or is there more?
I have like three more slides.
Okay. So in listening to this, I had previously discussed with, with Andy Morris whether or not I should recuse myself from this item, because the property that I bought about nine years ago does have an ADU on it. And because we've always long-term rented it, we've never short-term rented it, he and I decided that I was fine to continue to participate in this. However, having listened to some more of the details, because I did not actually permit that ADU myself, I do not have 100% confidence that it is legal. I don't know that it isn't legal, but because I don't actually have personal knowledge of that, I'm feeling uncomfortable about presiding over this item. So Courtney, Vice Mayor Henderson, I'm really sorry to do this to you on such short notice, but I'm going to recuse myself from this item, and turn my mic off. And if you could take over and request council comments and public comment for me, I greatly appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Clovestad.
Thank you, and sorry again for the interruption, Shauna.
Okay. I thought you were going to ask me about prevailing wages. Okay. Happy to, we'll do, so, so in summary, what we are proposing is that through the infusion of these incentives, that we actually go back and we update our five-year program goals. And we are suggesting that instead of aiming for 15, that we would aim for 20, of which nine, 20 per year, of which nine per year would be potentially deed restricted through these incentives. And then, so that, that new goal would be from, moving from 75 over five years to 100. It's, it's due, it's, it's important to point out that, you know, when we talk about deed restrictions, that, you know, I think we're all used to sort of like in perpetuity or 55 years, as we see in some of the affordable housing. And we really tried to make this appealing to people who were already planning a long-term renting and looking for some financial tools, and, you know, five years, five years is the, the two, the grant and the loan, and then the 15 years is for that larger construction loan, but not to onerous. We know, I put this in the staff report, there's some other considerations so that you know we're thinking about this. So obviously, with, not only with the ADU program and managing the variety of these loans and grants, but also the expansion of just in general, housing in general, we are looking at ways to expand staffing. We're not exactly sure what that looks like, but we'll be having that conversation over the next few weeks as we go into the next budget cycle. But just so you know, we're aware that there's implications. Prevailing wage, I touched upon that, but again, we're aware of this, and we'll continue to work on ways to make that not such an onerous task. Monitoring and enforcement, touched on this very briefly in the staff report, but, you know, as I mentioned in the last slide, we're looking at adding 44 new deed restrictions, just in this program alone. And then you talk about the 200 new units coming on, and we're starting to have a, it's a great position to be in. We are starting to have a very large portfolio of deed restricted units in the Town of Truckee. And so what does that mean as far as monitoring and enforcement? We have a lot of great models to look at in other communities, especially Colorado, where they do a great job of managing their deed restrictions through online portals and things like that. So appreciate the feedback from council on that, and it's something that we're looking at and talking about, and it was sort of slated for the next program, which was a sort of a deed restriction, which would include a more robust monitoring and enforcement. I would say in the, in the interim, we do have Caitlin, who does a great job, and I work with her directly, and then with our short-term rental team, we're, we're in constant So alternatives, so tonight, it's, it's obviously in your discussion, after this, you know, some alternatives that you could think about is different ways to structure the grants and loans. We are putting forward a proposal that we stick with providing incentives just for the purpose of long-term rentals and not going back to the short-term rentals. And then I just wanted to point out that all of the details with the loan and the grants would be carefully laid out with assistance from Joanne, like she's done with our past loan products. So tonight's just a very high level. So this again was in the staff report, so night, asking for an allocation. This is budgeted currently in the, in the CIP. There is funding in place to do that, so I'm not asking for new funding. The sort, for, of the 970, 400 would come from the state, 100 from the general fund, and then our first request to use Measure K funds. So the, the request to council is that council approve expansion of the current ADU pilot program to include a new loan and grant incentives in the amount of $970,000 to accelerate both new and unpermitted accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And with that...
Shauna, thank you so much. I really appreciate the presentation and just the really holistic nature of it, and how you have proposed so many different pathways. I know you did a lot of research. You answered so many questions that council had in advance, so just thank you for that. So I think with that, we'll move directly into council questions. Council Member Polavy.
No questions for me. Thank you. Great job. I already asked a number of them before the meeting, so thanks.
Thank you. Council Member Zabriskie.
Thank you, Shauna. So it's nine, it's a $970,000 package in total, right?
Correct.
And then the town's contribution is 420,000? Has the town staff considered, well, let me ask this, is there a square footage cap on the town's grant contribution?
No, there's not. We have one, we have one square footage cap, and that is for the, the $50,000 loan that's funded through the state.
The SB2 money requires a cap. Did staff consider whether to impose a cap or?
We did, and, and we had a whole, we had other things in there, and we started to feel like we were adding too many restrictions, and we started to remove them to make it more appealing for the market. But you could certainly suggest that.
What are, what I'm thinking about is a cap that's tied to the number of bedrooms. I realize what the state is doing with SB2 is with 750 square feet, you're essentially talking about nothing larger than two bedrooms, I'd say. That would be a pretty tight little house. My thought is whether it might be good to consider a cap that's tied to bedroom size. And the reason for my posing this to you is with the town spending this money on housing, we also have a goal of reducing greenhouse gases. And certainly, ADUs compared with the primary house are going to be smaller. But it also seems like if the town's actually going to put in money, we should consider putting a cap based, based, a cap on square footage based on bedroom size. And I want to make sure I understand, the only concern you have, or the group you talked with has, is the complication, how it complicates the application or the motivation for a person to join the program.
I think what we're finding is people are coming in with what they want to build. And so, well, first of all, I want to say that per our code, you can't build over 1,200. The cap is, we do have that built into the code. Secondly, we were feeling like we were adding a laundry list of things that people needed to do to get our money, and we, the list was getting long. And so we went back to the drawing board and started to shorten the list. But we have it in one of the loan products, so.
Okay. Along these lines, let me also ask, I'm, where I'm going is all electrification or some kind of incentive for electrification. And I want to get your thoughts on what if a portion of the funding had an additional sweetener for someone who was interested in doing an all-electric ADU, as is being done in the lower elevations and in Vermont, I believe, with certain housing. And to give you a little bit more background of my thinking in regard to this question is, I can imagine there are homeowners up here who are more adventuresome, more interested in achieving carbon neutrality, who are willing to take greater risks, and with an incentive... And with an incentive in the ADU without making it a requirement, but with a, an adjusted incentive, it could be in the town's interest to have essentially a private party establishing a model project with an all-electric ADU? Or with an ADU that has electric hot water and electric heating or electric stoves? What, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, so Yana and I talked about this earlier today, and what I said is because we're setting up the infrastructure for loans and grants, it, it would be not that difficult to add in another menu item such as this. If you, if, if council decided to do this, I mentioned the stove rebate program that would be something that we, we have in place at the town, that would be something similar to this, that if people did an all-electric, they would be reimbursed for up to a certain amount for a certain grant amount. Again, we're going to have the same issues with prevailing wage and the same issues with everything else, but it's certainly something that, that council could discuss to add as another way, I don't, you would have to decide whether you want to add money or reallocate some of the additional, the existing proposed money.
Okay. But you have no objection then to the council modifying the resolution to give staff the discretion to create a particular incentive, a pilot project, if you will, for an all-electric home or some other form of electrification for the ADU?
Councilmember Zabriskie, if I could just jump in here, and Shawna, I apologize, but I would suggest maybe the council think about this truly as a pilot program and then not add too many layers at this point. Give us a chance to get the program up and running, operational, and see how it works, and then come back and report to you on that and consider adding some additional elements or incentives at that point. I'm concerned if we add a bunch of different layers on this without understanding or having a good sense at this point how much additional staff time is needed for compliance and monitoring and really to implement it, we might be getting in over our head with just adding additional incentives on top of what we already have.
Okay. I'm not thinking in terms of layers. I'm thinking in terms of flexibility that would allow the staff to create a particular incentive, for example, giving a greater loan, greater loan amount to a builder who's willing to do an all-electric ADU. And you could put a cap on it, say five, no more than three ADUs or something.
Yeah, I guess I would concur that I, we would just need, I, we'd need more time to go back to think about that, because I'm, I'm just looking at where that fits in, does it fit into the existing, or is it a new, a new loan, or is it a grant?
Grant.
And then I'd have to research what, what it costs in order to make it pencil, so it just would take, it'd be hard to answer right now.
So what I might.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a grant.
Sorry, go ahead, Yana.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a grant, up to three ADUs. You go all-electric, your subsidy is $5,000 more, and you spread the offset among the other part of the program.
Councilmembers Zabriskie, I think those are some great ideas. Just for the sake of time, do you have any other questions? And then, of course, we'll come back to council deliberations.
No, I just want to make sure I get all the thoughts from staff on that question.
Shawna, Jen, did you have anything else that you wanted to add specifically on that?
I'll go ahead and jump in. You know, I think that the interest here is looking at adding in sustainability components, and so, and I think definitely council should discuss this as a group, but there may be other things that, to Jen's point, we would want to think about adding in for, you know, kind of future add-ons where you can get sort of the, whether it's the $25,000 grant or if you're doing a loan, and then if you're going to do like all-electric, or you are doing, you know, some sort of renewable materials in your design, or it's, you know, just something that we haven't thought about, that we would want to add that as another element. So I, I think what we're hearing and that we can kind of go and dig into deeper is sort of those other layers of sustainability that go above and beyond just what a building code requirement would have.
I think that's great. Thank you so much, Danielle, I really appreciate that. Councilmember Zabriskie, did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Romack.
Thank you. Just a few quick questions. One, Shawna, in the unpermitted loan and the new build grant, there's a 120% AMI on the deed restriction. Is that, well, could we adjust that level if we were interested in, you know, allowing for a higher AMI?
So that is a, that is a strategic question that council will need to decide. As I mentioned in my housing update, 120 is really sort of the cap that the town has stayed with, but you could certainly talk about it. I will mention that rent, market rate rent right now in Truckee, based on landing and Craig's, listing on Craigslist, for a studio ADU ranges from about 1,000, everything, everything varies on size and type of, you know, but in general, we're seeing rents at about 1,000 to 1,400 for a studio, and 1,200 to 1,600 for a one-bedroom. So that's, that's market. And in the 120 for one person, a studio would rent, the cap that you could rent it at would be 1,943. For two people at the 120% AMI cap, the rent would be 2,218. So we're feeling like the 120 cap, though it is in sync with what the town does, it's, it's still higher than what market is bearing, and so it wouldn't be that restrictive for an, a homeowner when they really look at the rents they could get with that restriction that we're putting on to get the funding. But yes, so what I, what I've said whenever, whenever I roll out a new program is what we say is, this is new, and we're giving it our best shot with requirements and, and details, but that we would come back to council. Usually we come back at the year mark, but because these are new and there's a lot of questions about adding things in or changing things, we could come back at the six-month mark and, and have a conversation about making some changes.
Thank you. And, and then kind of along those lines, what was the thought behind no deed restriction for the grant for the unpermitted ADUs?
Easy peasy. The idea behind that was, let's get people interested in what we have to offer. You still have to submit, you know, receipts and get reimbursed for expenses. So as you remember in the staff report, we originally had $3,000 in there. What we're seeing with the after-the-fact ADUs coming in, most of them are, the, the ones that came in this year, we, we've been talking to people about what it costs them to go through the permitting process. I have this, this woman who, up in Tahuodah, she went through it, and this, all her costs, including our fees, was 2,517. And so we were just trying to look at sort of what does it cost people to go through the, our permitting process for an existing unit and try to offer some offset for those costs? So we can, and the 3,000 also matches what we have found to be attractive when, in rolling out the long-term rental grant program. We weren't sure if that number was going to be interesting to people, and it seemed to be enough of an amount to be interesting. But then we re-looked at the prevailing wage rules, and we didn't want someone to have to go through prevailing wage requirements for $3,000. So we bumped it down to one, because that's a cutoff for not triggering prevailing wage. And we just, we want to encourage people to come in and, and get those unpermitted units into compliance.
So I would just add, there's a, you know, kind of health, safety lens to this, too, that a lot of people, we've found, do the unpermitted work because they really want the income, but they don't want sort of the unintended consequences of building permits, like additional property tax applied, or, you know, a finer lens on sort of what they're building. And not that that makes it right, but I think in our perspective and kind of working with different property owners who have admitted to unpermitted work and do want to correct it, you know, the $1,000 is a bit of an incentive for them to come in and for us to work through kind of those more immediate life safety issues and make sure that they have, you know, egress, they've got proper, you know, ventilation, they've got their, you know, ability for their, their tenants to be in there safely. So that's, that's a big driver for us.
Thank you. And that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Romack. I have just two outstanding questions, and one really builds on what Councilmember Romack was just asking about. So for the unpermitted ADU loan and then the new ADU construction grant, both at 120% of AMI, they have a five-year deed restriction. And I'm just curious, I know we want it to be fairly minimal because we want to sort of entice people and not make it too restrictive to come in, but how did we decide on that, that five years? And, and I guess my, my broader question is, is that term sufficient?
I guess I'll go back to, and Danielle can help me out here, but we, we, we originally had 10. Again, we were building off the state loan program and just felt like that was a, a big ask for the amount of money that we were offering. But at the same time, we wanted our investment to truly create a long-term rental for a meaningful amount of time. So we came to that number feeling, based on conversations that I've been having with people, where, you know, when I first started talking about the state loan, I said, well, there's going to be this $50,000 construction loan, but you're, you know, but it will require a 10 or a 15-year deed restriction, and people sort of had to think about that commitment because they didn't know they're going to sell their house or what, you know, they, it was a hard, so we thought five was more reasonable. And again, that's one of those data points that we can re-check in with. But again, it is an incentive, and so we're trying to make it attractive, so people do that, and then we lock down the long-term rental.
Thank you, Shawna, that really, that helps clarify, I appreciate that. The second and last question that I have, and this is something that I, I think kind of came out during the presentation, Shawna, is just sort of the incredible importance of the technical assistance that you all are offering to people to shepherd them through this process. And so I'm just curious if that is a huge driver for this, or if we expect it to continue to grow. Is part of what we need more staff time or resources to support that, sort of beyond the financial incentives? Are we resource limited and providing the technical assistance, or, or do we forecast that we could be based on what we hope will be growing interest in this?
So I believe you're asking, do we need to put, do we need to expand the technical assistance side of our ADU program? So, so yeah, so right now, Jamie has five hours a week to support this team on, with that particular service. So yes, we recognize we're going to need more of that, and we are looking at those scenarios as we look at the next budget cycle. But absolutely have that in mind, and we're trying to, we're trying to figure out not just that, but looking ahead at sort of deed restriction and my skills and what we need and so, so yes, the answer to that is yes. Are you asking?
You've answered it, and I really appreciate it. Just look forward to the, the next budgeting process as well. So thank you for just the, the foresight into that. Okay, I, I think with that, if there aren't any other council comments, we will move to public comment. I believe we have a few.
Mayor Closestead and council members, Peter Finolio here, incoming government affairs manager for the contractors association of Truckee Tahoe. I'm providing comment on agenda item 7.1, the ADU loan and grant program. Kat, thanks Town Housing Manager Shawna Doherty for coming to our Affordable Workforce Housing Committee meeting in December. Shawna gave us a clear picture of what she thought would work for an ADU program in Truckee. Her description in the staff report gives thorough details for implementation and expected outcomes. It's phenomenal that 18 building permits were processed in 2020 for new ADUs under the existing pilot program. We support this expanded program as presented and have no changes to suggest. We think this package enhances and improves what is already in place. We cannot wait to start publicizing the loans and grants to our members, and we look forward, we look for further clarity from staff on when grant funds trigger a prevailing wage requirement. Thank you.
Thank you for that encouraging comment.
Good evening. This is John Falk. I'm the legislative advocate for the Tahos here at Board of Realtors, and I'm speaking to agenda item 7.1. I wish to express our support for the ADU program expansion. The pilot program is an important first step, essentially broadening it to include the provisions as outlined in the staff report, the 13-page staff report would be wise because it, in point of fact, does offer additional opportunities to expand the potential housing available for our local workforce, and it will also encourage the instruct, the construction of ADUs and those that have ADUs that are of questionable origin. It will help bring them into the fold, even if they're already paying TRT, and ensure that the, the unit is, is safe and the unit is appropriate. So it seems to me this is a win-win situation, and we should follow some of the examples of other cities and counties that have, have done similar programs. And having it be for a limited time span is also prudent, given that you want people to feel the, the urgency of getting this done. We, of course, are never fans of deed restrictions or other provenance, but as set out in table two and other areas within the document, it's a short enough duration that even with incentives, it's still would be an attractive option. Please support this and move it forward as is. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hello, my name is Heather Rankow, and I'm calling in to provide public comment on the item on tonight's agenda, so 7.1. I wanted to say I'm fully supportive of all the ADU and housing programs that are before you tonight. I fully support all of them on both sides. I also support the amnesty program. I think that's a great way that we can kind of grab some extra units that are unpermitted and bring them legal, which also supports the public safety of our community. One of the things I wanted to question is regarding the prevailing wage and how it relates to the grants and the loans. I know there's some kind of some gray area, and I think that something that wasn't put in the staff report that might, staff might consider is putting some additional costs towards legal time to really get a full view on how things qualify. When it comes to a restorative unit, right, so an after-the-fact building permit, what if it was done all owner builder? Typically prevailing wage needs to be certified during the project, so how do you go back and do it? And then is it based on the building permit valuation? So I think there's a lot of questions there that we probably need to flush out. I know previously, last year, we were sort of looking at this, and we were trying to define what de minimis is, because there's case law. From my research, it seems that sometime in July of 2021, the governor's put into place an actual number, which is 2%. So I'm just kind of curious if we could do some more research on this to make sure that it's a pretty clean cut, or that the town puts aside some staff time, so when these do come in, that each project can have a legal review to see whether prevailing wage will apply? And also probably trying to give more direction to the housing manager on the situations when specifically it applies. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen, and I look forward to hearing your comments. Bye.
Thanks for calling in, Heather.
I have a text message I'm going to play as well.
I am supportive of the auto incentive program and think this can provide valuable long-term rentals to locals. Great job putting this program together. I am not supportive of providing additional long-term conversion grants to unpermitted ADUs. The incentive for these owners should be not getting fined and bringing these units up to code with a suite loan provided by the town. I don't think our tax dollars should be used to further reward these owners with a grant. These units should not be allowed to short-term rent in the future. The owners can still. The owners can still get long-term rent if they need additional income to afford their house. The long-term rental conversion grants should not be part of the unpermitted incentive program.
Judy, thank you for playing that. Do we have any other public comment?
We do. It's just coming in now.
Thank you.
Actually, it's a text comment, and it's brief enough that I don't want to take the time to move it into the player system. So it's from Bill Greeno. He's totally in favor of Item 7.1, please take action tonight, and on 7.1 as proposed.
Bill, thank you for your comment.
It looks like that's it on 7.1.
Okay. So we will close public comment on Item 7.1 and move to council deliberations. Councilmember Romack, would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Henderson. You know, I think this is a great program. ADUs are definitely something that is a great opportunity for us to, you know, create additional housing and create this housing in our already existing neighborhoods, you know, where people can be part of a community and where, you know, our trails connect, and maybe they can get on a bus with a transit stop located nearby. So again, ADUs just make a lot of sense. I, I think it's also smart that we do support bringing some of these unpermitted ADUs up to code and safety. You know, I went back and listened to the November 10 meeting where Danielle discussed, you know, a situation in Sierra Meadows a few years ago with a fire, and how important that everything was up to code and people got out safely. So I do support both new construction and unpermitted ADUs. I would just say, I asked the question about 120% AMI, and Shawna, you kind of mentioned, you know, it would, market rate falls under that, so that would be fine for the homeowners. I'm also more thinking for our locals who are looking for housing. I know 120% AMI for two people is $88,700. So for two people, that would be each of them making, you know, $44,000, which I just did the math, would be a little over $21 an hour. So again, it's not a huge salary for two people to be over that 120% AMI. So that would be something I'd be interested in potentially looking at to expand that AMI percentage to go higher. But I also understand, you know, we just heard everybody's in support of this program, and I'm supportive of moving it forward if it makes sense to move it forward as is now. And then, as Shawna suggested, come back in six months or so to look at how it's going and if we want to expand AMI rates. So that's my thought. And then one other thought, Vice Mayor Henderson, going off your question about staff time, just making sure we're really cautious about that. I think this is a great program, but understanding, you know, yeah, if we're seeing tons and tons of people applying and it's putting a burden on our staff, you know, do we need to add extra resources for that? So, you know, maybe if this came back in six months, get a good update on that so we have a better understanding of what else we might have to put towards the program to make it really successful. But overall, yeah, in favor of it, and I think those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Romack. Councilmember Polavy.
All right. Can you guys hear me okay? So I agree with everything that Lindsay said. I appreciate Shawna, your quick, off-the-cuff changes based on some of our questions, and I think, you know, just really impressive questions that happened before the council meeting, just showing that we're all really thinking about some of the details here. And I'm happy to see some of that interest rate drop. I'm happy to see a recognition of the monitoring process moving forward, and obviously the resources needed. So all of that's great. I'm in favor of moving forward as the, as everything has been presented to us. And my only extra comment, I appreciate Councilmembers Abriski, every, all the questions you were asking, and I agree with a lot of them. I'm just very cautious that this is not the right place to be trying to stack additional things. I think we can absolutely stack additional things as we move forward, but what I really envision is a more succinct sort of sustainability GHG reduction menu, similar to how we've been working on housing, starting to move forward here in the near future. And I think we'll have some boundaries and some ability to articulate some of that during our retreat next week. But I am hesitant to make, you know, even though it's easy, how do we, you know, how do we really adjust right now? And I think that piece of it would be best to just leave out. Let's try to get this off the ground as easily and quickly as possible, and then certainly add layers later as we go. And really adding layers to more of the town's development code. I mean, there's no reason why an ADU should be electrified, and a regular house shouldn't be electrified. So that's why I don't think this is the place for that, but I look forward to bringing that back in the future. Other than that, I'm in agreement with everything that's been presented and ready to proceed.
Thank you, Councilmember Polavy. Councilmembers Abriski.
Yeah, two points. First of all, on the electrification, essentially, what I'm proposing is give the town manager the discretion to increase new construction grants by $5,000 per ADU for up to three new all-electric, no fossil fuel ADUs. I, I can pretty much see I'm not going to get the votes tonight. People haven't had time to think about it. I'd like you to think about it. This, I don't see this as complicating things. It creates an opportunity to have a model home that's all-electric, and I think there are people out there with just that little bit of sweetener would entertain it. So I'd really like to see this come back later so we can try to include that. So respectfully, I don't think that's adding a layer, that's just adding some discretion to the approval. The other point concerns bedroom size. It really seems like if the town is going to put money into the ADU program, this particular program, we should be, at the same time, thinking more about reducing greenhouse gas consumption in connection with the size of an ADU. Let's remember that what we're trying to do here is reduce the cost of new homes for people. And one way to reduce construction cost is to reduce the size of the building. And of course, larger families, people with three or four children or more, are going to need a three-bedroom ADU, and we should take that into account and do a tiered approach, say, a 750-foot maximum for a two-bedroom, up to a two-bedroom, and maybe 1,200 for a three-bedroom. But do something like that, and I don't think that really is adding that much. Please give this your thought. I will throw in my hat tonight, but I would like to see us come back to this as soon as possible at a later date. And if anyone has any rejoinders, I'd be happy to hear them. I mean, comments on what I'm proposing.
I really appreciate your comments, Councilmembers Abriski. And I think what I would like to just say is, you know, what, sort of reiterate what I said in the beginning, you know, this really is a holistic approach. It is a start of a program. I really hear what you say, and I think, you know, a lot of folks, for those listening, they know that environmental stewardship is incredibly important to our community. When we have opportunities to move forward on two goals at the same time, on, you know, meeting our housing needs and also working on, you know, environmental stewardship and the sustainability of our community, that's, that's really a win-win. With that said, I think, you know, I would want to see staff investigate that a little bit further to understand what other programs of that sort have been offered. To Danielle's point, are there other types of things that we could offer beyond incentives for electrification, like building envelope construction and other things like that? And what type of incentives are really necessary to move the dial on that? So I think those are the main comments that I have. I just really appreciate all of staff's work in putting this together. You answered, I think, no less than 40 questions from us in advance of this meeting today. So I also really appreciate just how engaged everyone is in this, this particular item. So I think with that, do we have a motion?
I will make, this is Councilmember Romack. I'll make a motion, but I did have another comment first. And it's, it's just, you know, with Councilmembers Abriski's ideas and then mine about increasing potentially AMI, just, and I think this came up in one of the questions, what sort of, you know, conversations does staff have with people who call in? And maybe just encourage staff, when they do have these conversations, if people say, oh, no, I'm not going to do it, you know, try to find out a little bit more. I, you know, and I know now I'm adding more effort to staff when I just said I'm concerned they have so much to do, but, you know, if we could get a better understanding, if, you know, they make, you know, they would go through it if they had different opportunities or, you know, they would do more environmentally sustainable improvements if they could get an additional grant. So I don't know if there's a way, you know, just staff, as you're talking to folks, you know, you could get a sense from people if they're saying, oh, no, we're not interested. Why? Or the Contractors Association, you know, also talk to their members and keep staff and council updated. So I would just share that. And then with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the expansion of the current ADU pilot program to include new loan and grant incentives in the amount of $970,000 to accelerate both new and unpermitted accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
Second.
Let's do a roll call, please. Councilmember Polavy.
Here. Yes.
Councilmembers Abriski.
Yes.
Councilmember Romack.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henderson. Yes. And Mayor Klosstad abstains. So with that, the motion passes, and I will pass the baton back to Mayor Klosstad.
Vice Mayor Henderson, great job. Sorry to do that to you on such short notice, but I always choose the path of abundance of caution. So, great discussion. Thank you very much for all of that. The next item is 7.2, Council Direction on Development Code Amendment for Short-Term Rental Use in Multifamily. And who do we have presenting that?
Danielle will be presenting.
Danielle.
Okay, we're going to share screen here.
I like Chris's notes here. It's so funny. I practiced it this time, believe it or not, and it's still giving me the weird setup.
We can see it. We just couldn't see the next slide, too.
Yeah. We'll just roll with it. I'll fix it next time, but I only have four slides, so it'll be quick. So I know that there was some interest from my capital of sort of why we're bringing this back to you versus just having the staff go straight to Planning Commission. And so I thought it would be helpful to kind of walk through our reasoning for that as part of this. But just to give some context, you know, we evolve, right? So we learn things as we start adopting different ordinances, and then we go back and look at other regulations that we have, and we say, oh, wait, there's an inconsistency here. So that's a pretty regular thing. That's why you see us bring, you know, different Development Code Amendments to council over time. What we try to focus on is if there's an underlying policy question, then we really want that direction from council first before we start working with the Planning Commission, because we really don't want to spend time on something that maybe council thinks isn't relevant for us to work on. So that's in part the reason why we wanted to bring this to you first, is that we recognize that the town has already said that we're okay with doing short-term rentals. What we didn't really get into the details of through that process was in what context? So the planning staff's been looking at, you know, where people are doing them, what zone they're in, and have recognized that, yeah, we know people are doing single-family home rentals, but they're also renting multifamily units, and that's been a variety of options from, say, like a condo on Northwoods or a town home like in Grace Crossing. But we've also seen some activity with apartments, and that actually could include some of the apartment projects where we assumed people weren't doing that in, so maybe some of our affordable housing projects. And so this is a discussion point for council to kind of understand that Development Code requires a use permit for doing short-term rentals or what the Development Code considers transient rentals for multifamily uses. But we've never had anyone come in and request a use permit, and we'd never really monitored the activity that was going on. We were doing, you know, TOT collection, but it's just sort of a, you know, disconnect between how sometimes we work through the Development Code versus the municipal code. So it is kind of a cleanup, except that there are other options that could be considered beyond just removing the use permit as a requirement for multifamily. So yes, that's the question. Do you want us to work with the Planning Commission and remove the use permit? But I put this slide as sort of the last slide as a question, and that's the policy question of, if the Planning Commission gets into this discussion, there's other options that they're probably going to want to ask about. So it's get rid of the use permit and just say it's permitted, so it puts it on the same playing field as our single-family operators right now. Do we treat town homes, condos, apartments the same, different? Is there any distinction between those? You know, we haven't really dug into the why behind the use permit, but typically, a use permit's put in place because there's a need to look at sort of compatibility with surrounding uses, there's special circumstances to the property. So a lot of times, you know, multifamily project may not have the same type of parking, it may not have, you know, some of the other things that you would expect when you kind of have a short-term rental activity. And now that we have an ordinance in place to monitor nuisance, it's a bit different. Wow, what is that screen doing? That was interesting. So really, the question is, you know, do you want us to work with the Planning Commission? And as part of that, you know, you can provide us any kind of, you know, basic discussion points to have with the Planning Commission, but some of the things that the staff are going to go through is sort of this level of exercise in saying, you know, is there a deeper question here of why this was in the code in the first place? Do we think it matters now that we have a regulation in place for doing permits for short-term rentals? You know, we've already said in the community that that's something we want to look at. Is there some sort of reason for us treating them different that needs to continue? And that would include even the discussion about prohibiting. The staff's sort of recommendation, like I said, is to work with the Planning Commission. And at this point, we haven't dug that deep to kind of get into the answer to these issues other than we know that the use permit isn't the right path, it's not the process. We, you know, now have sort of that operator permit in place, and so we really just wanted to highlight this as something for the council to just provide direction on. I don't anticipate this being a very long conversation. I also anticipate us bringing a similar conversation to you about the Jorga Range specific plan next month, although we shouldn't talk about that as part of this. I just want to kind of highlight why the process is that we come to council first for something where we think there's just an underlying policy implication that wasn't part of, you know, previous direction of council, it wasn't something that came out of state law, it wasn't part of a previous Development Code Amendment process that we had been through. So pretty short and sweet. That's all I have.
Okay, we actually only saw your first slide, so I don't know if there was any additional information.
Yeah, Danielle, your slides were not advancing for some reason.
So if there's any additional information that we should be considering on any of those other slides, let us know. And in the meantime, I And in the meantime, I will open it up to council questions. So Councilmember Polavy, do you have any questions you'd like to ask? Danielle?
Yeah, thanks, Danielle. So just a quick question. A, yeah, this is great, send it back to the Planning Commission. Do you actually want us to opine on this tonight and provide some feedback, or do you just want us to be quiet and say yes or no?
I'm fine with yes or no. I mean, if you have any absolute heartburn about something, then yes, please share it. But, I mean, really, you're asking the Planning Commission to do that level of work for you.
Totally. So I would say I don't have any questions, then. I will reserve comments for later. Thank you.
Councilmember Zabriski.
Yes. Danielle, I'm comfortable with the possibility that the use permit was being required because apartment living involves common corridors and stairwells, and just you're physically so much closer to your neighbor. And I'm going to assume that there was a concern that short-term renters are just a different order of magnitude, different from long-term renters, and it could have just been pushed back from long-term apartment dwellers. With all that said, I appreciate your bringing it to the council, because the idea of a use permit does carry this in perpetuity aspect, it really does kind of create a vested right, which is where I don't think we want to go. Is there anything in addition to what you already have in the staff report in terms of your view on which direction you would like to see the Planning Commission go, assuming we send it back?
I mean, I would feel comfortable just removing the use permit and, you know, having some discussion, I think, about more of the apartment situation, because that's definitely different than a condo or townhome. I mean, those functionally feel a bit more like a single-family in a lot of ways. You know, there's less, kind of, like you said, that interaction that happens in corridors and hallways and things, they're still more independent. So I think that would be a good discussion for the Planning Commission to have.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Henderson.
No further questions. Thank you.
And Councilmember Romack.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one more quick question? Sorry, it came to me after yawns. Danielle, is there any issue if the Planning Commission decides that existing multifamily units, or let's say, things built before, you know, 2020 or 2021, you know, they have a use permit removed, but as of whatever Planning Commission date is, either that use permit will either be enforced, or they could take action to say, no more short-term rentals regardless in a multifamily situation? Is there any type of split there that is possible, or does it have to be all or none, or left, right, whatever?
No, I mean, they could definitely look at that. I mean, we're monitoring now, which, you know, like I said, we just hadn't gotten to that level. So now that we've got an operator list to work off of, you know, we have specific property addresses that, you know, we can track now and monitor. So they could do that. I think our concern is to, you know, Councilmember Zabriski's point about the in perpetuity, that that's pretty troublesome, because even if the council in the future wanted to make amendments to the short-term rental ordinance, it wouldn't affect those use permit properties. They only have to comply with what their requirements of their use permit are. So we do have concern about that.
But nobody has a use permit now, is what you were also saying, right?
Other than we have one that was submitted just recently for the property on the corner of Spring Street and Donner Pass Road that formerly housed Bespoke. So that's the only one. It's a little different context, because it's a mixed-use property, but that's the only one.
So we kind of have a timing issue here from, I mean, the reason why we sort of discovered this is because STR permits are required to be obtained by March 31st. So we do have a bit of a time crunch on this. You guys don't have a lot of time to figure out a couple options for Planning Commission, get a Planning Commission hearing, get them through a hearing, bring it back to us. We're on a pretty tight timeline here to give these people some regulatory certainty as this moves forward, right?
Right. So that's some of the reason why we wanted you to talk about this, is that we do have people who are starting to register, and we have recognized that we have properties that are multifamily. For now, we're letting them register, because I think at this point, we'd have to even allow them, you know, this year to operate, because we're in that sort of interim process, regardless of what happens. So it's more to just make sure that as we're working through this, we're recognizing that we do have that conflict.
And is there a possibility or an opportunity for a one-year risk fight, you know, and whatever is decided goes into action on, you know, January 1st, 2022, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we've already, we're already working under that assumption, pretty much, because we've not required the use permits before. And so for this one, it's just, you know, we want to make sure that we take the time to get Planning Commission to look at it and for council to look at it. So it would be smart of us to continue that process at this point.
I was just anticipating 125 public comments at our next council hearing, so yeah, as long as we get them through this year, I think that's a good move. Thank you so much. It just kindled a few extra questions for me, and once the timing issue came up. Thank you. No further questions. Mayor Clovstad.
Yeah, I think you guys asked them all. My question was, of course, the in perpetuity of the use permit, as well as our coinciding process of trying to get our short-term rentals registered. So, all right, perfect storm, right? Do we have any public comments? Yes, we do have one.
Sorry, it's not wanting to play.
This is John Falk. I'm the legislative advocate for the Talisiar Board of Realtors, speaking to Agenda Item While the proposal is sketched out in the three-page staff summary, it does seem on its face to be a prudent concept to remove the use permit requirement from the Development Code as it relates to multifamily construction projects and existing projects, because it does seem to be out of place or out of step. While we will definitely be interested in keeping an eye on how it goes through the Planning Commission in terms of ensuring that, especially in those instances where multifamily might be something rather small, like a duplex or a fourplex, in which all people are vested owners, they should retain the right to short-term rent from time to time to ensure that they can augment their revenue stream to pay off mortgage bills, whatever, to keep up with the high cost of living in this community. With that said, and hoping that everyone remains sensitive to the fact that short-term rentals provide more than lodging for visitors, they also provide a secondary source of income for residents and many people that find it essential to continue to live here. We would hope that making it simpler and easier to understand in the Development Code would make it simpler and easier for people to, in good faith, comply with the law. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And that's it for public comments? Okay. So let's bring it back to council deliberation. Councilmember Polavy, do you have any further comments?
I move that we kick this back to the Planning Commission, for them to have fun with it.
Okay. Councilmember Zabriski, do you have any additional comments before we move on something?
I agree that I would like to see it go back. I'm very, I want the Planning Commission to appreciate that my concern going forward is particularly concerning the multifamily residential rentals. And I hope they look deeply into this, whether it would be appropriate to allow short-term rentals at all in that situation. And I guess that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Henderson.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
And Councilmember Romack.
I will second Councilmember Polavy's motion, because I have nothing further to say, but I'd like to hear the Planning Commission discuss.
And I am in support of that. I think this is perfect task for the Planning Commission, and I will thank them in advance for their work on this effort, because it will be, it will be in the weeds. So can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Polavy.
Yes.
Councilmember Zabriski.
Yes.
Councilmember Romack.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Clovstad.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are done with council agendas, and it's only 8:12. Great job. So we're going to move to council reports. Polavy, would you like to start?
Sure, Mayor Clovstad. Thank you. What has happened? I was quickly going through my calendar. We had a Visit Truckee Tahoe board meeting, where we sort of started to articulate our next steps on the destination management plan, hired up some more staff, et cetera, added a board member. We added Shelley Braden from Turnkey Vacation Rentals. So the Visit Truckee Tahoe Board is now at capacity, it's seven members, and Hillary and I have been attending those regularly. Been having a lot of conversations with the outdoor recreation community on a number of different issues, and something, starting to work on sort of a regional collaborative of some sort, so trying to get that put together and see if there's opportunity to move an idea like that forward, really just a conversation like that forward. What else has happened? Oh, I joined, our town manager, Callaway, and I were at the chamber board meeting last week. Jen introduced herself to the remaining board members, who hadn't met her yet, provided a nice update, and once again fielded lots of questions about short-term rentals. Very fun subject for all of that. And I believe that's it. And I'm sorry, I've been missed, I missed the COVID call, because there's a Visit Truckee Tahoe conflict on those days. So I apologize for that. Other than that, I think that's all I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your services in those areas, Councilmember Polavy. Councilmember Zabriski, do you have anything to report? You're on mute.
Participated in the PUD focus group. I'm attending the League of Cities Training Exercise for new council members with other members of our council. And the town manager attended a Truckee River Legacy Foundation meeting as an advisor. And what else did I do? That's, that's most of what, that's most of what I've been involved in the last couple of weeks.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Henderson.
Thank you. I participated in the weekly town COVID calls. I'm also attending the League of California Cities New Mayors and Council Members Academy at our first two days virtually, and we have two more days to go, so that's exciting. I met with Supervisor Bullock. We talked about just a variety of items, including collaborations between the town and county, and met with the Friends of the Library again as a follow-up discussion to their presentation to council recently. And then tomorrow, I have my first Truckee River Basin Water Group meeting. And that's it, I think.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for participating in all of those. And Councilmember Romack.
Thank you. I attended my first Mountain Housing Council as a rep for Truckee Town Council. Thank you to Shauna, and Yumi, and Jen Callaway for all of their work on Mountain Housing Council, and we're excited for Mountain Housing Council 2.0. Also attending the League of California Cities New Mayors and Council Members Academy, great workshops, lots of good tips of how to run efficient meetings and other things. And attended the COVID calls, weekly COVID calls. Thanks to Danielle, and also Dan Wilkins. Met with each of them, just department briefings to get to know the town of Truckee even better, and I look forward to meeting with the rest of department heads in the near future. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Romack. Yeah, for the community that's still watching, obviously, we participate in reviewing staff reports in this meeting, but each of us are also assigned to a committee, and we also each spend time in areas of interest on behalf of the town. So this is our opportunity to report back out to our fellow council members what we've been up to and who we've been talking to. So for me, I also have been participating in the League of California Cities Training. I really, I'm sure everybody else that was there really enjoyed the Dysfunction Junction skit, and particularly really appreciate that we do not operate that way. And a couple coffee chats, which I've found very interesting, because there's a lot of resource and material sharing going on, which I've really enjoyed. And I've got a catalog of those things going that I'm willing to share with the rest of council members as well. I talked to the new board president of the Truckee Donner PUD, Krista Finn, about the results of their community outreach survey, and just what they're going to be doing with that information, and how those went for them. We also further discussed collaborating regionally on sustainability programs, carbon reduction goals, and, what do you know, electrification incentives. So right in line with some of the things that we've been talking about here tonight. I attended virtually the countywide oversight board as one of my committee services here, and had a great conversation also with District 5 Supervisor Bullock about areas where the town and the county can and should collaborate in order to best utilize our resources and leverage our mutual successes. So we'll be connecting again after our prioritize, priority-setting goal retreat and the county supervisors. I also had multiple discussions last week with Senator Feinstein's staffer about the vaccines, which is what's generated the letter that we just approved tonight, and I signed to head off. So I want to give a shout out to Caitlin Mayer, who has really been supportive of us here. I attended the first Truckee Springs Committee meeting of 2021, and we're going strong towards our goal of fundraising for that property and the bridge. Really been exciting working with them. And last but not least, I've spent some time talking to Bryn Kennedy, who is still very committed to our community, and we're looking for ways that she can support Truckee in its economic recovery. So more to come on that later. And with that, do we have any last words from the staff?
No, thank you. And we did get out just before the snow started, so everybody have a safe drive home. And thank you to Lynn, who's sitting next to me. She is cross-training and learning the clerk responsibilities. So for those of you that didn't recognize her voice, that was Lynn Baumgartner, and she is a admin technician in the clerk's office. So thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody. Drive safely.
Yes, thank you, Lynn. Thanks for taking over and keeping us on track. So we are adjourned until the February 1st team-building workshop, and then our next regular town council meeting will be Tuesday, February 9th. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Drive safely. Drive safely.